Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to take items seven H, seven I, and seven J together and out of order.
Second.
Moved in second to take seven H, I, and J together and out of order. These are continued public hearings for the Herb Chambers at sixty-two, or sixty-four, Cambridge Street. Wasn't there one at sixty-two which was a special, was a minor engineering change?
Yes, it should be on there.
These all say sixty-four.
It's the bottom one, but it's got the wrong address.
Alright, so that's, alright. These are for sixty-two and sixty-four Cambridge Street, the Herb Chambers Company, the Portion Audi Sites. The applicant's attorney has requested a continuation to the, no, that's okay. So, out of order, all in favor, take him out of order.
Aye.
Aye.
Four, zero, zero.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to further make a motion to continue these matters to the planning board meeting of February seventh, 2019, as requested by the applicant's attorney in an email dated January seventeenth, 2019.
Second.
Moved in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four, zero, zero. Citizens time, anyone here on a matter that is not on our agenda? Seeing none. Announcements?
Announcements, Martin Luther King Day is coming up this Monday, town offices will be closed. I think after this marathon week, I will be napping. I have my three-year-old, so I won't be napping, but, anyway, also, the following Monday, January twenty-eighth, is town meeting. So, tis January town meeting season. We have Article Two up on the agenda, which is exciting, as always, for January. So, that's, that's all the announcements I have. In terms of the item you just voted on, though, for announcements for the board, I did send around an email to try to get a subcommittee together to discuss Herb Chambers.
For next Thursday.
For next Thursday at?
One o'clock.
One o'clock, yeah. So, I just was looking for the members to respond.
Ernie and I both responded already that I saw last.
Ernie and Jack responded, and just looking for any other members to respond if they're interested.
Alrighty. One announcement I would make for those who weren't aware of it or didn't see, the panel discussion last night on what is Article Two on the warrant, the life sciences zoning amendment, went exceptionally well, and many thanks to Kristin and staff who put together an exceptionally informative panel discussion. Although it wasn't televised live, because Ways and Means was on the schedule before us, it was Facebook Live, and apparently, a number of people watched it on Facebook Live. We get the feedback and the likes and the stuff that I don't understand, but...
A hundred and seventy-five people have watched it right now, which is amazing.
Excellent. And I found it very informative, very helpful, in trying to make simple what can be confusing to understand, and hopefully, a lot of town meeting members, we're gonna have to vote for it on the twenty-eighth, were helped by it.
One additional thing on that, Jack?
Yes.
I would say thanks, thanks to our four-person panel of experts that participated, two of whom were Burlington residents, which was very good. And to that point, can I just elaborate on that just a second, since we have some time One of the panel members was Dr. Ed Parsons, who is a trained physicist and now has his own consulting company. I met him on the zoning bylaw review committee, and I know there are, and he was very, very knowledgeable. I mean, to the point where I think he's helped Kristin quite a bit in understanding part of life sciences, if I'm not mistaken.
I think we've both been given each other quite a large education on zoning bylaw and what is it is, and I've been illuminated with life science and equations and difficulties with...
My point in bringing that up, though, is lots of times, I'm sure all of us, will run into people that say blah, 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 and you'll say to them, "What are you doing for office?" And they say, "Well, I don't have enough time." That's, I'm sure that's very true, but if they have some knowledge that can be used in any one of the departments, border health, conservation, other department, you know, even, even just for a short period of time, or on occasion, I would, I would really feel good if they let the various departments know that they are available. We have a, we have a plethora of talent in this town, extreme, to the extreme degree. I mean, with, with all the high-tech stuff here and medical, but that's what I wanted to say, Jack. Thank you.
Good, thank you. And of course, Ed Weiner, who's on the border health, who has deep knowledge in biosciences and pharmaceutical sciences, that was very helpful to me.
Yep.
Let's see, okay. Minor engineering change, we can do that with four people. Okay, this is the one, were you able to get in touch with those folks about the placement of the generator?
Yes, if you want.
Oh, okay. So, this is six A, discussion, application for approval of a minor, minor engineering change, twelve Wilmington Road. Is that LG or Elgie, how do you pronounce that? LG Plumbing and Heating is the applicant. Staff, do you want to give a brief preliminary?
I will start, but I will say that Josh has definitely been the point person on this one. Twelve Wilmington Road, this is the commercial building that's kind of close to the intersection of Cambridge Street and sixty, well, not super close, but, and sixty-two, that for a lot of years had been the cabinet maker that had been working there, at least in my, when I first got here. That's, there's a kind of house in front driveway, and this building is set kind of way back. Josh can talk a little bit about, oh, actually, come on, just...
Yeah, I did already. They have got one.
Oh, so, you can see on, on the aerial, the building itself, it's kind of one of those very kind of historical, commercial building in the residential district, but Josh, I'll let you take it away.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty straightforward, I mean, the applicant can chime in also, if you feel, but there's just a sixty kilowatt natural gas generator being proposed at this property. We did initially, earlier in the week, tell them to move the generator out of a, out of the buffer because of the residential behind it, and then, after a meeting with a couple of the planning board members yesterday, we discussed potentially even a better location, which we did let the applicant know earlier today, you know, in terms of timing, they didn't have a ti, they didn't have the opportunity to, like, produce a new plan to show where the generator could be located, but we were hoping that tonight, with the applicant being here, that we could maybe find even a better location, if it was appropriate for the applicant.
I was the one who raised that concern. I live, and my house is near a commercial building, and I think the distance is even further than here, but if you put some type of a noisy mechanism up against a hard cement wall, it's like the Hats Memorial Sheldon on the Charles, it just echoes and you hear everything. So, you know, my thought is, is there a way we can move that away from a hard wall or otherwise soundproof it, so when that thing kicks in, the neighbors won't have to listen to it. That's my thinking.
I'm Brian McCarthy, for the record, with RJ O'Callen Associates, we're civil engineers.
Can you pull that mic closer, please? Thank you.
For the record, my name is Brian McCarthy with RJ O'Callen Associates, we're the civil engineers on the project, and with me tonight is Jim Driscoll from Elge Plumbing, the property owners. And we did, yes, we did receive the email earlier today, and both Jim and I were looking at, you know, what's the possibility of moving it. We're pretty limited around the property.
Is that on, Josh?
So, this is the site plan, Wilmington Road here, driveway that goes in, the dark lines, the building, this is what we had proposed, as you had seen on the plan, and that location is set twenty-two feet from the property line, which complies with the buffer setback. The property line itself on this property basically follows the edge of pavement all the way around, and then it does a long area out in the back here in the woods that's set way down low, drops way down. This is the edge of the parking here.
That's the edge of the property, the edge of the pavement?
This is the edge of the pavement, sorry, and then the property line?
Property line, okay.
Back here. So, we chose, you know, we wanted to put it in the back because there was no other area, basically on the site, that we could put it that wouldn't be in a parking area or a travel aisle driveway area. It would impact maneuverability of cars and other vehicles and vans that come into the property.
You have a shortage of parking spaces now, do you...
There's the right amount of parking spaces on here for the, for the business. So, I think your concern is with it here, that it's up against this wall, and that the sound will, or just bounce back off the wall.
And just the residential in the back.
Right, so, in the residential, actually, Jim and I today was looking at the residential houses back here, this property here, the house is back about, what was it, Jim, about a hundred?
Hundred and fifty feet.
Hundred and fifty feet.
From the property line.
From the property line, and these other houses were kind of similar, this one's a little bit closer.
You can kind of see in the aerial.
Yeah.
The houses on Dennis or...
To that point, distance and trees don't help. My back porch windows in my house are probably seven or eight hundred feet away from the back wall. I live behind Crossroads Shopping Center, and noises in the back there, be it trucks or dumpsters banging, it just echoes up there, and so, if you're talking two hundred feet from the house and that thing kicks off, they'll hear it.
So, what I should explain is, it's an emergency generator.
Okay.
So, it's not on all the time. It's only obviously when we lose power that it comes on. And it does get tested, though.
Okay.
At regular periods.
During daytime?
We can do, we can adjust the time that it gets tested.
We can adjust the time and the day of when it would test, it tests for thirty minutes.
Okay.
And so, we, we contacted the generator manufacturer, Kohler, the manufacturer, just to, because this, this unit that they're gonna supply will come with a, a sound attenuator enclosure, and so, the testing that's been done on this particular generator, the, the noise level, when it's operating at a hundred percent load, is, reaches to sixty-five decibels. So, just in comparison, what is that, what is that like, I guess?
Less than my lawnmower.
It's, it's like a dishwasher in your house when you're there, or it's like standing four feet from someone and talking a normal conversation. That's, that's the level of, of noise we're talking about.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What is the difference in size, oh, two questions. One, the average residential generator, that, you know, the house behind you could put in if they wanted to, what's the average size of that generator versus this type of generator? And are there different options for the enclosure for the sound rating?
Unfortunately, I can't answer the first one.
Well, the first one I can, a little bit. The first one, we just did a little, little research today, and this is a sixty kilowatt in the...
Sixty-five, oh, sixty, oh, you're right, too.
And a residential, like, second-family house, that's like two thousand to twenty hundred square feet is around...
Twenty-five hundred, five thousand max.
Is around, like, twenty, twenty kilowatts.
So, this is sixty?
Yeah, so it's about three times, you know, powerful or whatever.
But I don't know if that relates to the amount of noise level.
No, no, but just in terms of, just, you know...
But in other, in other applicants that we've had in front of us, they've said that there's kind of different rating, that there are sometimes options for different ratings for the enclosures, and what I guess we're all saying is, whatever you can do to buffer the sound, both from the enclosure itself, if there's options, and then through placement and/or some vegetation around it, just to minimize the, just what the chairman is talking about in terms of bouncing sound and echoing into the neighborhood.
And so, we did, just to go back to the point of trying to put it somewhere else, we did look at, what, the only place would be around the corner here.
Right.
Which would impact parking, but it's not really any more, I mean, you're probably getting an additional ten feet, maybe, at the most, of distance.
Yeah, but the, the angle of incidence, the old game of incidence and refraction, you know, the bouncing this way, the sound would bounce, but you've got a neighbor over on that side, too.
You've got neighbors in the front.
Yeah, so, if, most of these, these days, come with insulation package around the machine itself, as, as it's delivered.
Yes.
And if you're putting up some kind of an enclosure that is around it, for safety reasons, I'm sure, if it's not a hard material, so it will absorb some of the sound, that will attenuate it somewhat, too. We, we just want to be considerate, you're plunk dab in the middle of a residential zone.
Yep.
It's, to have this type of a use, plunk dab is very unusual in town, so we do want to be considerate of the residential neighbors.
I understand.
And I don't think it, it's any type of an excessive burden to take a couple of extra steps to make sure that the sound is attenuated, so maybe you could describe what you're doing to confine and attenuate the sound.
Right, so, as I mentioned, it does come with its own sound attenuating enclosure. Initially, we weren't gonna do any more than that, but since we've got the comment, we talked, Jim and I have been talking, and Jim's saying that we could put up a, a solid wood-type fence or enclosure on, on the, on the resident's side of that. To, to lessen that impact.
If it's solid, then, you know, the sound will bounce off that, hit the wall, bounce back.
Can I...
Generally speaking, something that's soft and absorbs the sound.
Well, we can, come up with...
If you have something along that line that will absorb the sound.
Mr. Chairman? Landscaping, like bushes?
Unfortunately, they don't, you know, the only real way to stop signs, like the airports, they put mounds of dirt, but I'm, I'm not asking you to do that.
Well, sometimes you...
Something that deflects it up.
The problem is, the wall is hard, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, you can make the wall softer, if you want, with, you know, louvers and whatever, so the, as you say, the angle of incidence, the angle of refraction, well, you know, if you have something which they do, they do sell, I am sure, that you could put on the wall behind it.
And you're right, you could come up with an enclosure that's actually got...
Well, not even an enclosure, just on the, just on the wall itself.
We'll call it a wall.
Because that's what's gonna produce the echo.
Yes, and we could put something that's in, that, that, you can actually get fences that have staggered interiors to the...
On that idea.
That will...
Also, on the same point, though, you say, you say it comes with, the enclosure is, has sound deadener.
The body itself is...
Right, but what about, what about the exhaust itself? Now, that can't be in the enclosure, is it? It's gotta be out.
So, that gets extended up to the roof level.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna bring the exhaust above the roof level. Okay, there is, having, having dealt with something like this before, using construction equipment beside, in hospital environments, they do, they do have something they call a hospital muffler. I'm not sure how expensive it is, but it definitely attenuates the sound way down, to the point where, you know, patients in hospital are, can't hear it, so you might want to look at something like that, too.
I do know the specs for this do include a, on the exhaust, they do include, I'm not sure of the exact terminology, but a muffler, we'll call it.
Yeah.
They do include that, so that's why they can get this down to a, that's sixty decibel, sixty-five decibel.
Okay.
And most of the adjustments are coming out the exhaust rather than through the body?
Sure, they would be, yeah.
Yes, yep.
And it's a gas fire, gas, natural gas.
Natural gas, yes. Where's the natural gas coming in?
It's gonna be coming across the roof, the gas meter is located, gas meter is located right here in this corner of the building.
Okay.
We're gonna come up the building, run it across the roof, and then come back down the back.
You're the plumber and the gas fitter, so...
Yep, no, yeah, no, it's all, all to code.
It's your business.
Yep.
Okay. That would scare me, but...
No, we run gas on the roof all the time.
Okay.
We could condition it to review the sound attenuation prior to, there are options for sound attenuation prior to installation, if you would prefer.
And I think scheduling it, scheduling the tests, which is gonna happen most of the...
Oh, in the daytime, yeah.
Daytime, I'm just gonna... Barbara?
I don't have any other questions, thank you.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Actually, there is one.
Bill?
I'm good.
Want to review any of this?
No, I'm good.
You know what, okay. Is anyone in the audience here on this? Our rebuttus notified, this is a minor engineering change.
No, they were not.
Right. Have you contacted any of your rebuttus?
No, we have not.
Have not.
Do you want a motion, Jack?
Yes.
Do you want a motion?
And all the department units are favorable, so...
Okay, no problems with the departments?
No.
Okay. Anything further from staff?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the request for approval of a minor engineering change for a property located at twelve Wilmington Road to install a sixty kilowatt natural gas emergency generator and new concrete pad and associated utilities as reflected on the redlined plan entitled Site Plan in Burlington, Mass., prepared by Raymond Engineering Service, dated May sixth, twenty, two thousand eleven, excuse me, two thousand nine, and revised to January fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, consisting of one sheet subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions as amended.
Second.
Okay, and with, has discussed sound things, and you'll work with our staff to take care of that.
Great.
It's moved in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, five, zero, zero. Thank you.
Thank you for time.
Next, we have...
Top of page five.
Where are we?
Page five.
Research.
Five, yes. Continue discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, thirty Burlington Mall Road, Kinda Care School is the applicant. Do we have any updated, oh, we haven't got that from Josh yet, okay.
You have a plan? Okay.
Here you go, Josh, thanks.
Thank you. You were just...
No more. I added a note about maintenance.
Okay. Any problems?
No, you, do you want me to read it down?
There's a new comment from Conservation, that's all.
should clean, should inspect and clean if necessary the proposed receiving stormwater system, manholes, catch basins, detention basin, and underground infiltration chambers. The results of the inspection should be provided to the planning board prior to construction.
Good evening.
Good evening, my name is David, David Romero, with Commonwealth Engineering, here on behalf of the applicant.
And we clarify that the applicant is Kinda Care School?
The applicant is Kinda Care, and I'm here on behalf of them.
Okay.
With some confusion, I know, because of the neighbor and, but, simply, we're asking...
Is there anyone from Kinda Care here, or you're on your own?
No, there's not.
Okay.
So, simply, we're just asking to install a catch basin with some pipe to alleviate a drainage problem that, that they have acknowledged, and that's what we're here for, we're just looking to change that and improve that condition. That's what the application is for. There is revision to the plan, the staff and engineering has asked us to add a note to the plan that the drainage will be owned and maintained by the applicant.
And you've got that in here somewhere?
We do have that on the plan.
It's conditioned as well.
And you've got it in the text, too, okay. You weren't, you weren't the engineer here last time?
I was not here, no, it was another gentleman.
It was the big tall, Eric, big tall guy.
Eric, Eric E. is here, yes.
Yeah, okay, alright. I was getting a little confused here, what's going on? Alrighty, staff?
It's a catch basin, a piece of curb, and a piece of pipe. I mean, on the face of it, it's a pretty simple application. I think we just got, when you start confused, you never can get there, so I think that was why we continued at the last meeting. We met with Conservation and Engineering and the applicant to discuss the project, there was a little confusion as to where the right-of-way is and who owned what and where, that's all been figured out, everyone is on the same page. The only thing that has come up, that Conservation had mentioned, was they're taking the runoff from this drive and bringing it back up to the infiltration basin that's on-site, or the basin that's on-site, so we've requested that they review to make sure that it was, it works as it was designed and constructed, and also that it can function with the additional runoff, so, we, we don't have...
Not if it's going into the town storm rain system?
Much of the site is, except for just this piece of the dr, the little, the piece of the driveway, so, we also talked about the recent construction, these were the two houses, if you remember, I don't go way, way, way back, but, as part of the land swap, Gutierrez had owned them, as part of the land swap, when Five Wall Street was built, they gave it to the town. Anyway, but recently, the, is the house right, the house right next door is existing but renovated, and the house next to that's the new one in the back, right?
Right.
Anyway, with the reconstruction of both of those houses, there's been a lot of vegetation clearing, which has exacerbated kind of water flowing down, and before it was in trees and shrubs and grasses, so, this will help bring the drainage down, that's coming down the driveway, back into the basin. The Conservation Administrator did comment that, you know, if they add additional vegetation in the neighbors' yards who are experiencing some of the pooling of water, that additional vegetation will certainly help to alleviate that. This will help alleviate the severity of the problem, certainly, so, so, otherwise, we have, we have no concern with the proposal and all the issues.
The little curbing they're putting in is safe from snowplows, it's vertical granite, maybe?
Uh, it's...
It's behind the catch basin, the proposed...
What type of curbing is it?
Pardon me?
What type of curbing?
Uh, granite.
Yep.
It is vertical granite, or slow granite?
Uh, vertical, we're proposing vertical.
Vertical granite, okay.
Behind the catch basin. We want to make sure it doesn't go over the, that's what's happening now, it's, it's going over the top, we want to make sure it stays in the vertical.
Traps it behind it.
Do you have anything else?
No.
That's it.
Anything further? Anyone in the audience here to speak on this? If you, you, okay, you can, if, if you'd like to speak to us, you can, you sit down there or stand at the microphone, either one, whatever you feel comfortable doing. Just make sure you pull the microphone close, so the folks at home can hear you.
Sure, I, I live next to Kinda Care, and if the...
Please, can you state your name for the record, please?
Shadai Bakdiari, I, I'm the owner of the house next to Kinda Care, and with your agreement, I'll, I'll be happy with the, with the plan, as long as the water flow is not over my yard.
You don't want the free water? Okay.
Oh, I get plenty of water.
All right. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Barbara Del Duca of thirty-three South Bedford Street.
So, you're around the corner and down the hill.
I live directly across the street from their driveway, so I think it's really important, as my neighbor said, to keep the water snow away from us, because when the school plows, they plow their snow from the driveway across the street onto the sidewalk in front of my house. Last year, we had an ice storm, and when the snowplow comes from the sidewalk, it's so strong that it knocked down my arbor vitae trees.
Wow.
And I'm, you know, I'm... And I'm, you know, I'm really discouraged, because everything the school does means they're gonna dump on the neighbors, and this has been going on for years, and I just figured it was important for us neighbors to show up, because we're trying to be good neighbors, but we expect people to respect our rights, too, so.
Do you know who does this snow plowing? Do you know who does this snow plowing?
I don't know, but I'll run out of the house with a pen, because I've talked to them, and occasionally, they'll kind of.
Yeah, then they send somebody else.
And when my husband was alive, he was much more about things.
Maybe the same truck, but a different driver each time.
Right.
But he'll come and he'll, he'll push all the gunk across the street and pile it up.
You can't do that legally.
Yeah.
It's horrible for us.
They're supposed to keep it on their property, or truck it away.
I think they should get that message, then, because.
We can reiterate that in the conditions.
When you have an ice storm, and when the, that sidewalk plow, which is a wonderful machine, but it's very, very strong, and when it's throwing bullets out of the top, I woke up one morning last winter, and two of my arborvitae's were down.
Just from the weight of the snow from the chute?
It's the town, it's the town.
That's the town.
It was so strong, it knocked.
Is that the town sidewalk?
So I just want to bring it.
But that's the town sidewalk, as opposed to the Kinda Care, so there's two snow partners, their plow pushing it across the street.
Yep.
And then that extra snow shooting from the town sidewalk plow, okay.
It's a two-pronged thing, they pile it up, and then the, the little machine comes by, and it's, it's a real nuisance.
The town should be following up on that, because they shouldn't be pushing on to the town property.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's town sidewalk, that's relatively new, and our street was narrowed, which made bigger driveways for some of us, and more to shovel and more snow, so I just appreciate some attention to this matter, because I'm on my own and I have to deal with it, so.
And you don't like shoveling in the. Okay.
Could you, could you state your name again?
Barbara Del Duca.
Barbara.
South Bedford Street.
I got everything except for.
Okay, you, you guys will, do that, can you send a letter to Kinda Care that they're responsible for their plow?
We'll add it in the conditions that.
Okay.
I mean, it.
Well, they may not read all the conditions.
It's something they need to do, and.
Yes, okay.
It's, it's easy for us if we put in the conditions and then say it's.
All right, so, that's being added as a condition here.
I don't think anybody should be bringing their, their snow off-site anyway, right?
Right. They can count it off-site, but they can't push it on their neighbor?
They can count it off-site, they can't push it off-site onto another property, right?
Correct, or, or onto the town.
Yeah.
Right away.
I'm, I'm disappointed that no one from Kinda Care came, because this is an issue involving their neighbors, and now we've heard about a second issue involving their neighbors, we also have issues with them and their illegal signs, which also are in the conditions, but, um, they were in their conditions previously as well, so I would request that you inform your client that they need to read these conditions very carefully and adhere to them.
We certainly will, yeah.
Thank you.
They're exempt from zoning, but they're not exempt from good behavior.
That's right. I'm not totally exempt from zoning.
Well.
No, they can go into a residential zone, but they still have to comply with.
The rules, yes.
The rules, right.
Joe?
Oh, yeah.
Any further comment, Joe? Barbara?
Um, no, I've said what I needed to.
Carol?
Um, no, I just, uh, agree with the fact that the snow needs to stay on their own property or be carted off, so, I'm all set.
No, all set, thank you.
No, I said, no, thank you.
All righty. Anyone else in the audience? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for a minor engineering change for property located at thirty Burlington Mall Road to install a new catch basin and drainage manhole as reflected on the redlined site plan entitled Kinda Care School, thirty Mall Road at South Bedford Street, prepared by Commonwealth Engineering Incorporated, dated October thirtieth, twenty eighteen, consisting of one sheet, subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions as amended.
This is revised to one fourteen nineteen.
Yep.
So, okay.
We just did.
Okay, as amended.
Yep. Second.
It moved in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, six zero zero. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, member Raymond mentioned that he should be here about eight o'clock, and I know our next item is life science, and I don't want to, I know there's people in the audience that want to talk about life science, but I'm not sure if you want to try to take a discussion item and then jump back into it to see if we could get a full board, but.
We could do Kava, too.
Which would you?
Or, or we could do the, uh, we could take, um, the next item out of order, which is Kava.
The Kava Messy?
Yeah. Good idea.
That required, okay, we've got enough people to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we take item seven B out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
It moved in second to take item seven B, that is public hearing application for approval for special permit pursuant to section four point two point six point nine, fast order food establishments of zoning bylaws, eighty-five Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington, Mass., Kava Messy Grill LLC, applicant, this is in Burlington Mall at the location of the old building, the old Sears Auto Center.
Oh, thank you.
I'll say again.
Yeah, I'll send this one, I'll share with you.
All righty.
Oh, yeah?
Yep, sure. Guess we're sharing.
Have you been there before?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Ooh. Thank you. Is that what it said?
This is healthy Mediterranean food, for anyone who wants to eat healthy, I guess.
Eighty-five Middlesex Turnpike.
Oh, this is the Kinda Care.
Two sets of plans here, what's the story?
Mark just stopped us.
I just brought, gave you a, um.
This is the updated one?
It's an updated one that has a couple of color, um, brings in it as well, I thought might be helpful for the purposes of the discussion.
Ah, gotcha, okay.
If I could, uh, for the record attorney, Mark Vaughn, here tonight representing Kava in connection with the special permit application, uh, very pleased to be before, I know you know Justin Feldhouse, who was with Simon Burlington Mall, and Temi Asusi, who is, uh, design manager with Kava, has, uh, actually flown up from Washington DC, which is their headquarters, to be with you, so, we're very excited about the opportunity.
Welcome to Burlington.
They're very excited about the opportunity to locate here in Burlington, at the Burlington Mall location, um, just taking a step back for a moment, they're looking to occupy space in what affectionately is known as the former Tire Battery Auto Building, uh, that I know this board worked so hard on this past year to go through the site plan approval process, but, um, this would be the first tenant to be located in that new building, which is obviously under construction and starting to take shape. As you can see on the plan, they would be in the space that is at the corner, most proximate to the former Sears building, so they would be at that corner location, um, they are a fast casual style restaurant that specializes in authentic Mediterranean flavored cuisine, as you can see from the, the menu that Temi handed out, uh, again, they originated in Washington, uh, but they've expanded into Massachusetts, they have locations currently in Boston, Edum, and in Higam, so this would be their fourth location, um, and they've been looking at Burlington for a while, and, uh, this location would be ideal, so, it's a relatively small, um, business in terms of square footage, it's about twenty-five-hundred square feet, and they have, uh, both interior seats, and then they have, um, exterior patio dining, um, as well, so, um. It's, it's, again, it's a fast casual restaurant, you go up to a counter, and, uh, the food is all there, it's prepared in front of you, you kind of walk through a line, and I actually haven't been there myself, uh, so I can't say that I have direct experience with it.
It's not table service?
It's not table service, no, um, so I think it's consistent with, um, Chipotle, um, in terms of you go up and you ask them.
In the western style.
Yeah, so maybe, tell me if you could, maybe you can introduce a little bit about the, the cuisine, so, yeah.
So as Mark said, uh, sorry, as Mark said, um, we're Kava, and we are based out of Washington DC, we're Mediterranean fast casual, um, and thank you for giving us time tonight to talk with you guys, um, so basically, our menu is, we try to use locally sourced foods from our different locations, so our menu kind of changes in variance, like, um, depending on the location, depending on the food that's available in those locations, um, we've been looking to break into Boston since twenty sixteen, and we, this would actually be our fifth restaurant in the area, we recently opened it, um, a restaurant in Kendall Square, and then we have one in Back Bay as well, um, they've been doing really well, this is, you know, Boston's an area that, you know, we were very interested in, um, in being in, and Burlington, I think, even back in twenty sixteen, when we were looking to open in the Boston area, we looked at Burlington as well, we've been trying to break into this market for a little while now, um, and one of the reasons is because we think we offer a very diverse, um, a very diverse source of food, we have, it's very healthy fare, and we try to target areas that have kind of a diversity of patrons, so there's lots of families in this area, there's also students, you also have, you know, high school students who might want to run in for a quick bite, you have families who might want to like a cheap, a cheap meal, a cheap and healthy and good.
Inexpensive.
Expensive.
Yes, exactly.
Family.
So, you know, that's kind of our target area, and this is, this is kind of the perfect place, we really, we really feel like we can offer Burlington something great, um, so we're really excited to be working with Simon to open a property here.
So the, uh, the handouts that I, I just gave you here, I think, might be helpful, the, um, again, the space is the one that's on the, um, be the top right-hand corner of the, of the property, it's that twenty-five-hundred square foot restaurant space, and again, the, the main mall Sears building is up here, so it would be that corner that's, that's closest to the, the former Sears building.
Are you looking at this sheet?
Uh, yes, yes, um, it's that space up in the top right, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
The second sheet just gives you a sense of, they're gonna have an outdoor patio area, which you can see up in the top right, it's going to be, uh, protected, obviously, with some form of a, um, uh, protective bar, protective barrier there to.
Is that elevated, Mark?
It is, I don't believe it's elevated, um, it's, it's pretty much, you, you see in the, the bottom left photo there, Jack, that it's sitting much flat with the, with the terrain, but the, uh, the, the protective barrier, it's still in a design phase right now, but it's gonna be some form.
Is there gonna be something inside those wooden fences that will stop a vehicle that's moving fast, not just the wooden fence?
It, it, it's gonna be both of a, a kind of wood slats, but also something that's maybe a concrete or metallic, something that's durable to protect patrons from, from vehicles, so, it's still being kind of finely designed, but something that would be attractive, but also durable enough to serve its purpose.
Yeah, we would want something to keep a car from, or a truck or something from going into the pavement sitting there.
And I think the, that, that same photo, too, I think, gives you a fair representation of just the exterior, it's gonna be glass, but also wood, the, um, you'll, you'll see that lighter wood, kind of the, the square shaped wood, which is a, um, a wooden feature, and then the other black that you really can't see, but that's also, it's a darker wood, from what I understand, as well.
So this is an accurate render, rendering, then, of the, of what it'll look like?
Um, of the base building, it's pretty accurate, it's just the patio, um, the patio barrier that is kind of still in flux design-wise, um, we're still kind of working that out, so it, it's going to be either wood or concrete, just it might not be represented exactly the same, but it'll be a sturdy barrier, so it's kind of a main change.
So the, so the barrier that had, appears to have the planters in between, so that may be concrete, you're saying?
Yeah, so that's like a brushed concrete barrier wall.
Looks like brushed concrete.
With planters kind of inter, intergrained into the wall structure.
Yeah, okay.
So that's kind of a portion that's still in design, the final appearance may change, may differ a little bit from this rendering, but the, the idea is to have a barrier that goes around our patio.
Can we, can we have a, can we view that when it gets finalized, or, you know, I, when I hear concrete, it, it kind of, my antennae go up, you know, wood looks beautiful in there, and.
Yeah.
There's, I'm sure, a lot of things that'll look nice in there, I'm not sure.
So, we actually had the same discussion, so when we say concrete, that's actually the, the material itself, but the intention is to have it be scored, and, you know, not just look like it's a concrete curb or something, so something that's. Yeah, something that it's attractive, and, you know, not what you might think it would be, just pure concrete, so.
So you, you want to, uh, put something in there for staff or members to review at some point for a final sign-off?
Yeah, I, I mean, if we can get, just a, once it's decided, can we get a rendering of that, just to say, you know, see if that's something that, and then, you know, we'll leave approval contingent on if we can have staff input on that, or, you know, whatever we're at the point we're coming, so we don't have to hold up any kinds of, you know, approvals, if that's what the board is inclined to do, but, um, at least we can have.
So you're putting that in the, uh, conditions, Kristen? Okay.
I'm sure the mall's gonna want it to look nice anyway, but, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So, uh, just what, would, would the concept be that the final design to be, uh, signed off of it by the planning director? Yeah.
I, that would be my preference, if that's not gonna be too much of a inconvenience, I think, yeah.
We're all in this together, I mean, I think we want it to be attractive and look good, but also, you know, obviously, it's serving a purpose to protect people at that intersection, too, so.
How far into the construction are you?
We're right along on schedule, uh, right now, we anticipate turning the building over to tenants either in March or in April, depending on which space it is that they're gonna occupy, uh, and then we plan to open the building later this fall.
You did not waste any time.
We did our best not to.
All right. Anything further, staff? At this point?
Well, I just, I just wanted to, um, let the board know that there are, um, a significant number of, um, bollards around that area, um, there's the idea of protection and safety.
Back from the original design?
Yes, so there's almost like two layers of protection, um, with patrons sitting at the tables there, there's several bollards right up against the curb on that corner, so I just wanted to make that clear for the.
That exterior seating is seasonal. Do we have any dates, or they can use their discretion on when they want people to sit out there?
For the, um, applicants that have had dates, they're usually are in the kind of enclosures that there's a roof and open sides, and this is just, this is just an open patio.
Very open, yeah.
Yeah, well, you've got the corner of two sizable buildings, you get the architectural canyon effect, that can become very cold.
We're not worried they're gonna have people out there.
That's, well, it's not our problem, you know, we're not gonna go sit there in December, but.
Um, the, the only other two kind of unique features, um, is just with the patio, that if you recall, with the whole concept, they showed patio areas, um, within a lot of the whole plan, um, and we understood that as each, um, tenant would come forward, that within those patio areas, you'd see a more finalized design, so we have conditioned to see that final design, but also to ensure that it's within those boundaries that we've talked about before, just to make sure that the travel way is still as wide as we had anticipated in all of those items. Um, and the second thing that is not totally related to Kava, and I, I wouldn't link it to Kava necessarily, but as a reminder, overall, um, we talked about, um, the sidewalk along Burlington Mall Road and the timeline for the sidewalk, and at this point, we're at the point where we're looking to finalize the design, um, between the applicant and the town, so we can start, um, assisting with the permitting in order to get that done in terms of, and be ready to hit the ground when we can start construction, so we are reminding the applicant, and I've talked to Mark about it already.
We have the mall representative here, the manager, so.
That we want to make sure that we get that final sidewalk design soon, so we can start that process and everybody's on the same timeline, so, um, not, I'm not saying it has to do with Kava, but we're here and we want to talk about it.
What's your expectation as to when they should have that done for you?
I think we should be talking about it, um, for now, so.
It is being designed by, VHB is working on it.
Okay.
There's been, you know, kind of a preliminary design that was shared with staff, um, earlier this year, or the latter part of last year, um, so I think it's, it's in process, and under the, uh, planning board decision, the site plan decision, we need to submit it prior to the first occupancy permit being issued for the Tire Battery Auto Building, so it, it's gonna be coming up, so we're.
And you're looking for people to start occupying that in March?
They would start construction in March or April.
Okay.
They would occupy the space as it would be complete Ju- July at the earliest, probably more into the fall. more into the fall.
Yeah, but as, as you know...
But we have an obligation as part of that sidewalk, this, this part of the responsibility of that process belongs with us.
Correct.
So we don't want to be held back and given something to the last minute and, and we get yelled at for dropping the ball.
There, there's no intention to wait till the last minute. It's, it's in process and, uh, I think as Justin mentioned, uh, you know, VHB should hopefully have it over the next month or so, or, so...
All right, so before the end of February, we can expect that?
Um, I can't guarantee it, Jack, but, I mean, I'm, if I were working on it, I could guarantee it, but I'm not an engineer, so I'll, I'll...
So our expectation is before the end of February and you can pass that information along?
Fair enough.
Yeah, so in the point, and I understand that what's written in the decision, but, um, in looking at kind of just construction timelines, we're in January now, no one's building sidewalk, but at this time, we hit March, April, May, June, if we could, I mean, the sooner the better if we can get it done. I, I know you're already doing sidewalk work out there, um, coming off the site, so if we can coordinate getting it done this construction season versus next construction season, I think it's better for everybody. So it's just a reminder. Otherwise, Kava, we don't have any issues.
How many, how many seats in this place?
Forty-two interior and fourteen exterior, so...
And what percentage of your business you find is takeout?
Um, I think it's, it varies depending on location. Um, for this location, we, we don't see it as, as much of a takeout. We see it as more people coming and sitting down. So I'd say maybe like twenty, thirty percent. Um, but certain locations like our, our Kendall Square location that's mostly takeout, you know, it, it kind of depends on the layout and the amount of space that we have.
So you, but you do expect a mix of that here?
Yes, yes. So those two parking spots that we have designated are actually our digital ordering takeout spots, so people can drive up. They're like ten-minute parking spots, they can run in, um, get their order and walk out.
So there'll be an app or some type of way for people?
Yeah, we have an app that you order through.
Okay. All righty. Anything further?
No.
Ernie?
Um, the, the only other thing relates to, uh, that I'm thinking of, uh, relates to the site plan as a whole, when we approved the site plan, did we, we also, uh, approved a bus shelter on the Mall Road. Do you know if that, has that been in yet, Justin? Do you know?
The bus shelter has not been installed yet, but it's, it's on order from what I understand.
All right, 'cause every time you come in, I'm going to be asking about that, just so you know.
Fair.
Thanks.
A shelter sidewalk.
Shelter sidewalk.
You all set, Bill?
All set, thank you.
Carol?
Okay. Um, department notes, Inspector Buildings favorable, DPW favorable with conditions. Are those just standard?
Yep. All the comments are standard for food establishments.
Okay, then it's all favorable and with standard conditions.
Okay.
So the Board of Health and Fire Department is, is favorable.
All righty.
Um, I have a question about, it's not actually for Kava, but regarding the enclosure around the outdoor seating. Since you are going to be having other outdoor seating areas, is it your intention to have them all be uniformed so that they're, they look the same?
I believe all of them will have their own unique character relative to the restaurant space. So just as, uh, Kava has their own design for the patio seating, the other restaurants are the same.
Good luck with you.
Good luck with you. Okay. Okay, um, oh, wait, one more thing. And this is in your condition, but I'm just going to call it to your attention. You are not allowed to have any temporary signs, only the signs that you get approved that are in your building. You can't have sandwich board signs or wavy signs or anything else like that.
What temporary sign?
And, um, the lighting is in here too, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll make a note of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just where you'd be...
Oh, and no TVs facing out.
No TVs facing outwards.
That's not, that's not a wrong...
Okay, it's not a sports bar, but...
Got it.
Sorry, I interrupted.
That's written, that's written in the conditions. It is now.
It's not, I think so, but I have to check.
Should incorporate it in as the standard conditions on every, every section?
It usually is for patio, that's why, it probably isn't...
So this, this actually pertains to patios as well. I don't see it, so I don't think it's going to be an issue. I don't think, you, you, the business plan doesn't include alcohol or beer and wine or anything now or in the future, any of the locations that...
No, no alcohol.
So it's, that's not an issue.
And the Greek restaurant, you can't get uzo, huh?
Eh? It's, I, you go there just for uzo.
Uh, I noticed in your drawing, you've got umbrellas. You, unless you get special permission from the Board of Appeals on the signs, they, you can't advertise on them, uh, that type of stuff.
Okay.
It's a public hearing. Anyone in the audience here to speak on this or wish to weigh in? There is none? Okay. Uh... Are we ready? Sure.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to close the plug, public hearing on this matter.
Second.
It's been moved in second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Six, zero, zero.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Carver Mezak Grill LLC for a special permit pursuant to section four point two point six point nine, fast order food establishments of the zoning bylaws to permit a fast order food establishment at eighty-five Middle Sex Turnpike Burlington Masch, Burlington Mall, subject to the terms conditions contained in Exhibit A as amended.
Second.
It's been moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Abstain? Six, zero, zero. Welcome to Burlington.
Thank you.
Welcome to Burlington.
Happy to be here.
Yeah, it looks good, doesn't it?
Yeah, it looks good.
Okay, we've got some minutes.
Uh, yes, you sent me two, there's three listed here.
There were three.
There were three? Okay. Uh, and I sent back, I didn't have a problem with any...
Correct.
Have you looked at the three sets of minutes?
Was it the, it was the three from the last time we didn't, uh, was it a...
I don't remember.
There are new ones. I think there were new.
Hold on, no, I think we, you're right, I don't think we did them last time.
No, we, we didn't.
Yeah, I'm wondering...
We haven't had minutes for like the past two meetings, I think, so...
Yeah.
These were like new.
But these, these were ones you sent me.
These were ones that you guys had never seen.
Ten days ago?
No, last week.
Last week, yeah, okay.
So I'm wondering...
Oh, these were new ones? Okay.
Do you recall looking at them?
I think I looked at them. I had comments on them.
Did you look at them?
I looked at them. I sent, I sent Josh.
It's sent about last week, like Wednesday or Thursday.
Yeah.
Maybe like a week ago, maybe.
Bill, did you get a chance to look at them?
Yep, yep, Bill responded.
Okay, so we've got enough.
So good.
Barbara responded too also, so...
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of, to approve the minutes of October seventeenth, twenty eighteen, November first, twenty eighteen, and November fifteenth, twenty eighteen.
Second.
It's moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Four, zero, one. Uh, okay, we're still waiting for Paul. I don't think we want to start the, uh, yeah, that's, that's got a section six in it, so I think we want to wait for that. Uh, we've got some discussion items. You've got something here on the budget.
All of the discussion items should be fairly short, I hope.
Yeah. How do we get into that?
Okay.
If you want to do the budget, you can't...
Discussion.
You have to take it out of order.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to take, make a motion to take the discussion items out of order.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Six, five, zero, zero.
Uh, I put one in front of you if it's near in your, it's not in your book, but it's on your book, the budget.
Oh.
Um, budgets are due. Um, I need you guys to vote on the budget, but I wanted to explain a few things. Um, as always, our budget is ninety-eight percent salary. Um, and the typical step, um, there he is. Um, step increase, um, that we're still going through, um, uh, usually has a two to three percent change, um, in the budget, which, um, is what you see reflected here. You have two cover sheets in front of you. One cover sheet, um, at two point three eight percent, and then one right below it says six point one four percent.
That's not guidelines.
And I will explain that in just a minute.
Okay.
But two point one four, or two point three eight, um, is the budget really with nothing changed. It's just standard step increases. Um, there was a little bit of reallocation just to reflect how we're spending between some of the, um, the, uh, the accounts, but really nothing, no change. Um, what the six point one four reflects is, if you recall, um, the town of, um, town meeting approved a Warren article way back, um, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, for GIS mapping. Um, and recently in twenty fifteen, sixteen? Twenty six, the maps.
Zoning maps?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen? We finally, finally updated zoning maps from like the beginning of time, um, which we use partial of that fund, that funding for primarily. Um, the next phase of that project was to get online mapping and trying to get all of the zoning, all the zoning, um, overlay districts into, from, um, the updated maps to the GIS system that you could, and have it be online so everyone could, um, use and interact with that system. We have done that and it is terrific and awesome. And if you haven't gone on, um, you can find the link through the planning department. Um, I credit Liz and Josh for...
Mostly Liz.
Mostly Liz for really getting this up and running, which is, it, it's one of those things that has been sitting on the list for like, I don't know, when did I get here, two thousand four? Since two thousand four and we're here. Um, but with that, so we, most of the seed funding from two thousand ten got us to this point. Um, but we also, now with GIS mapping, conservation is using it. We've had discussions with the assessors department about the assessors data, the engineering department. Um, but as with everything, we're still in the growth process where we have all of our maps on it, conservation is getting more and more layers of theirs. Um, we have the base assessor data, we're still getting some of the easement data and engineering data. Um, anyway, it's still in building process to make it even bigger and better and more awesome than it is now. Um, but it comes with, where does this sit in the budget of everybody? Um, so if you, uh, so it's for this year, um, in our budget, we, in the six point one four budget, it's about a twelve thousand dollar cost for the subscription, the maintenance, as well as the continued growth to build more layers into the system. But we've had, um, there's been some initial discussion with the other departments as to, this shouldn't sit in individual department budget, it should sit centrally. It should be, sit and be managed centrally somewhere, not in individual budget, since it covers multiple departments. So that conversation is ongoing. It needs to sit somewhere, um, and that's why we see two budgets. I'm advocating that it not be in our budget, that we, it sits somewhere else, but I just want to make sure that, um, we continue the program, that we have the funding for the program, that we can continue to grow, um, the online mapping that is used both internally and external. Any resident or business can go online and, and check out, um, any of the zoning layers or overlays, um, for where their business or residence is. So, um, so that's what the two, that's what the difference is. It's the twelve thousand dollar difference, otherwise unchanged, the twelve thousand dollars, we've been talking with other departments as to how to centrally manage both this as well as the viewpoint software, which is the, um, the permitting and data management software that the, the building department has currently adopted. We're in the process of bringing it up online. Um, we hope, what is it, February, we hope to kind of start doing some test permitting with the new program.
Oh, yeah.
Um, but that's another thing. It's, it doesn't sit in the cost in our department, and that was seed funding that the, um, the town clerk had started to get for a lot of departments. So we're just trying to figure out how best for both of these programs to sit, because they do span a lot of departments, but...
This twelve-five is an annual cost that you pay the, for a license or for a management or...
So, um, seven is the subscription and maintenance. The additional is the additional layers that we're building into the system.
So you're adding modules is the additional cost?
We're still in implementation and growth.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, my hope is that that'll be out of our budget and we can talk through as to where it will sit. I mean, whether it has to be a capital item, I need to just talk through with the administration a little bit more, but, um...
So do you expect it will be out of planning's budget before May or before ways and means votes on it or...
I hope. I, I just, it needs to be somewhere.
Okay.
And right now, I don't have another place to put it. If everyone else says it has to be in our budget, then it'll be in our budget, but I don't think it's the most appropriate place to put it. Um, but if it has to be, it has to be, and I'll make the case why we need it, but I hope that we have a larger discussion.
Well, like we have the muni law or municipal law, and where does that program sit?
Oh, the municipal system?
Yeah.
It's, it's centrally. In the central account.
So, so if not right away sometime soon, this would probably be appropriately into that same location as the municipal pro, whatever that...
I would hope that it sits with, in the same or similar central accounts as other programs that other multi-departmental entities use. I mean, it's just, it shouldn't sit in one...
And that may or may not happen before May?
I hope it happens.
You're expecting it to hap...
I hope it happens.
You're expecting it to happen before?
Next month.
Okay.
It just, it hasn't happened to the time when I need to bring the budget to you to approve.
It's just parked there for now.
It's, it's parked.
Okay.
Temporarily. It's idling in the space.
So if, if that is removed and moved centrally, you're well within guidelines on the budget?
Well within, yeah. So, um, so just wanted to bring that forward, make the case.
All righty.
No, no change.
Any questions?
Which one are we approving? Yes, which one are we voting on?
I would, um, you could vote on both of them. I mean, just, I think overall, I would hope that you all would agree with the concept that it should probably be centrally located somewhere. But if not, we, we need to continue the, this program that has been utilized by quite a few people, so...
So the motion looking for is, we're, we're supporting the proposed budget with the expectation that the, contracted services, the twelve five and contracted services will go centrally, but if not, if it, if for some reason it has to remain in the planning board budget, we will support it being there at least temporarily.
We support the continuation of it.
Yeah, we certainly don't want the program to disappear. We like the maps.
We've worked pretty hard to finally get here, so.
Anything further, Ernie?
Thank you.
Bill?
I'm all set, thank you.
Carol?
I'm fine, thank you.
Paul?
Hello.
Hi. Any questions on the budget?
No. Nothing.
No, it's just looking.
Alrighty. We'd like, uh, so it's, the thing is, we support the budget as proposed with the modifications and we support the modifications as suggested by the planning director. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, seven zero zero.
Thank you.
Alrighty, uh, shall we go back or do you want to finish the discussion?
I don't think anyone else in the audience is for our discussion, so.
Okay.
Let's do the life science.
So let's go back to-
Mr. Chairman, I propose, I'd like to make a motion to table the discussion until the end of-
Fine, we'll, we'll, let's just take up the other matter, so we're going back to seven?
Seven A.
Seven A. Continued public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw article through definitions and article four use regulations to address and define uses pertaining to life sciences submitted by the planning board. We save that for you to be here, you didn't want to go forward without you.
Well, thank you.
Much to the chagrin of the zoning bylaw review people who had to sit here and wait. So if you're upset that you had to wait, this will, yes.
I'll just tell you, which, uh, it was very interesting. We were having a presentation at the church by Lieutenant Mills on safety in emergencies with what's going on now. Very professional, all kinds of statistics and tell you who, who survived and how and so forth. So that was, they're still going on, but, thank you.
He's our resident life sciences expert, that's why we couldn't move on to him.
Alrighty, uh, Kristen, you want to start us off on this?
Did you read, did you read what it is?
Seven A.
Yeah, what?
Read into the public record what we're talking about.
Oh, no, I was waiting for the, uh, full copy of it.
Right here.
Well, okay, continued public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw, yes, I did read that.
I'll explain, so I'm, I'm going to pass down.
Kristen will explain the one too, then.
I have three documents.
Are these the three?
I'll explain what they are, they're three documents. Uh, the planning board members have, actually, the planning, planning board members in zoning bylaw review have received all three documents via email, but they, um, this is the hard copy. So number one is the version that is the update and revisions since the meeting of January ninth zoning bylaw review committee. And I will go over that. Number two is a more recent revision since last evening's discussion that reflects, a modification to section five one, five two calculation. The last handout, which starts with a table that looks like this. And, oh, that is about to come around. Is, starts with a table that was prepared by, um, Dr. Parsons, who's also on zoning bylaw reviews, also on our panel last night. In terms of evaluating-
A short one here.
Let's share one, I have one. As well as a discussion about-
We're not sure what that-
Kind of issues with the equation if mixed FAR. So let me back, way back up.
This goes with number one and number two? Or does it matter? Goes with both, okay.
It's, and I'll get to there, I'll get there. So let me back up to go through comments from the zoning bylaw review committee on, January ninth, which are included in both version one and two. And the, I don't know if members of the zoning bylaw review committee, if they want to come up to the table and be part of the discussion and they were very much active in making some of these changes and would have welcomed their feedback as well. But the changes included a conversation about life science in general and just this kind of ongoing, not confusion, but kind of biotechnology, life science. If you recall, this version came together from the comments of the building department, the board of health, of why are we regulating biotechnology and life science individually? It should be the same. And further to that, we still had the definition biotechnology and life science, but with the second definition of life science manufacture, factoring, it was just life science and life, biotechnology is life science, so why don't we just save life science? And then the prototype word was if we're doing manufacturing separately, the definite, in the definition above, it should be specific type of manufacturing such as prototype. So that's the definition change. On the use table change, the building department and the zoning bylaw review committee had noted that in the attempt to merge biotechnology with life science, we actually dropped off bio-life, biosafety level four, BL four laboratories are prohibited, um, which should have carried through and it didn't. If it's not in the bylaw, it's not allowed, but it was, when we did biotechnology in two thousand twelve, it was a strong opinion from both the board of health and this board to make sure it was stated somewhere. So that's why you see that in red in four two seven four one. And the second, just moving directly below that, four two seven four two, as we merged the two definitions, we left off subject to the regulations of the board of health here, where it should have been repeated as it was above. And the same thing, the biosafety level should have been noted here as well. The bylaw review committee caught something that was a terrific catch. We had meant to, it was meant to be no, no in four two seven two and S P S P. Somehow it got flipped when we put this last version together. We just flipped it back again, so. That, that's that change. On, turn the page, five one five, um, density table, table should have been capitalized. And then, and then we get into five one five two. So, um, before we get into that, does, do anyone from the zoning bylaw review, that you have the chair and vice chair here, do you have any comments on any of the other pieces before we get into the FAR piece? Okay. So when we began this exercise, um, we were trying to figure out kind of how do we kind of walk into this conservatively? From looking at impacts of laboratory type spaces versus traditional office type spaces. And trying to figure out a way to codify the building in a way that we could recognize that impact and associate both density and parking ratios to reflect what was actually happening. And so therefore, we had proposed the laboratory space could go to the maximum of point five. However, the office space had to still remain under the point two five, point one five, point two five. And then there was the calculation, how do you figure that out? The building department initially said, how in the world are we going to figure that out? If we're going to mix the two, is it all of it goes to point five, part of it? How do we calculate part of it if part of is one and part of it's another? And we didn't have an equation in, so we said, well, maybe we can build an equation. And as I mentioned in the email that I sent to all of you earlier, that Dr. Parsons was very, very first to point out that this, this doesn't work. And, you know, you could make it work and if you look at the handout with the table, with, and I'll explain the table, because I think the table was an excellent exercise that he put together. But, and this isn't even, this is, actually, this is even pretty, pretty clean compared to the, the multiple, multiple different equations. I mean, I think Liz and Josh caught me like just laughing, leaning back in my chair, because there's no way that like, we could put this in the bylaw and it'd be like legible to the average person. So we had that issue. And then, so when we looked at it, okay, so if you have a mix of point two five, point five, Burlington's built out, and we said, maybe that's a good mix, because Burlington overall is built out at a point four two and a mix is going to bring you somewhere early point fours and the point threes. If you look at the table that's on the front, using these equations, which I appreciate that he had gone through this exercise, that if, if you recall, so in five point five two, the first condition is in order to even be considered for the point five, you need to have at least of your, at least fifteen percent of the gross square footage clear, as used classified as four two seven four one or four two seven four two, which is the life science use. So that's, it is or it isn't, it's black and white. But then, and then the rest of your building is, you know, assuming it's under that point one five, point two five. So if you look at the table, if you have fifteen percent office, you're going to a twenty seven percent, so a point two seven, so a point-
Fifteen percent lab?
Fifteen percent, I'm sorry. Yes. Fifteen percent lab, it's a point two seven, is that a meaningful number? And then as you go up, so up, up to a hundred percent lab, you could get to a point five. So, you know, does that work? So the discussion last night, and I, I hope those of you that didn't attend, watch, if you watched it on Facebook Live, it'll be rebroadcast on BCAT this weekend, as well as multiple times coming up to town meeting, I hope, I hope you tune in, it was only an hour. Well, it was about two hours by the end with question and answer, but, um, for Paul, your benefit, we had forty five or so people in the audience here and we had, when I left the office to come over here, a hundred and seventy three watch, that people watched on Facebook Live. It's the biggest audience I've ever had, so, we were very excited. But anyway, so you, we talked about the industry, the importance of biotechnology in, um, in the Commonwealth in general, the growth of the market and really trying to understand where we are. And what came out was that we're, we're at the tip of the iceberg of really what life science is going to become. And we also talked about, okay, well, if we want to capture that industry, what, what is it, what do we need to be thinking about? And what had come up was that life science, it, it's hard to compartmentalize a life science buil, uh, building. Because it's not, you have the office here and the lab space here, kind of like the old days where it was all built out. But what was discussed last night was that it's, so much of it is kind of modular and some people talked about, they have machine, like multi-million dollar machines that are the size of a washing machine, but it, you know, it goes in here and then if you have this test, it's over here. And just how kind of the office and lab space are, need to be a little bit more flexible than what we have standard, standardly kind of built out. So it's more of a, at least the laboratory space, kind of more of a shelf for activities to be taken place and kind of moving around a little bit, not built out into, you know, a whole bunch of test tubes and tables and, and you'll still see that, but, in a lot of different types of ways to, to do different types of tests. And I wish I had the panel right here, because they could answer all these questions a lot more scientifically than I am. And anyway, so based on the conversation last night and based on the difficulty trying to get to an easy way to calculate this and look at, and trying to understand the impacts and we, this, what you have is number two in front of you. Does a simple, simple edit and it just crosses out the non-laboratory square footage. So therefore, what it's saying in here is that a life science building with a combination of office amenities, life, or office and life science can be point five. And what was commented yesterday was that typically life science is looking for, if they're building a new building, a higher, a higher ratio than that. The way that we advertised, um, we do need to maintain that point five. However, we do have the flexibility to modify the conditions to get there within the text to go to town meeting. So, um, so that revision is here in front of you. I did talk about it with Dr. Parsons today and he just, it being in the industry as well as on the panel last night and going through, um, a lot of these different ways to try to figure out how you get there in a clean, easy, well-understood way with the mix, that he, he felt very comfortable with, um, a change to allow the point five for the combined office and laboratory, which is still on the lower end from our neighbors, our neighbors are either, um, some of them are point five or higher or have no FAR at all. So just when we think about ways in which we can begin to attract the industry and that's, you know, to elevate our bio, our bio readiness rating, which we, right now, we're bronze. If we move, um, if we allow life science as a yes in a district, which we have in the IH, which we don't have a lot of IH, so, we need to allow it somewhere. We allow it as a yes in the IH, everywhere else it's special permit. But that allows us to elevate our status to gold, if not platinum, if we start pre-permitting, um, some sites and the, what we did at Bor Burlington Woods is a good example of kind of how we start to go from gold to platinum. But I mean, that's, that's really signaling the industry that we're, we're open. And want, you know, we want you to call us. And when you call us, we want to be able to give you an answer of, yes, we do have some space, what are you doing, yes, that fits with what we want. So, um, so that's what's in front of you. And I welcome any of you who were at the panel last night to elaborate on anything that I, I've discussed. And then just discuss between, you know, the, the equation's problematic. And are you comfortable with the option two? Which is actually a very simple revision for town meeting to move forward.
Question, there's one thing you said that wasn't covered last night. Did you say that it is, uh, the opinion that town meeting can amend this to something more than point five?
No.
Okay.
Because of the way it was posted and, um, Betsy Hughes asked me after the meeting and I, I said I'd check and I, I checked, checked into it and just looked at how we had posted it. There's an expectation that life science is going to be allowed or with, is, uh, the proposal is going to allow life science to go to an FAR of up to point five.
And that cannot be amended to a larger number on the floor?
Traditionally, that's how we have always, our policy has been and that's kind of how the AG likes to, you know, you don't all of a sudden say, oh, well, you advertise at point five, but now we're going to allow two.
They could amend it to point four, but they couldn't amend it to point six.
Be more conservative, but you can't open it up. So, um, that's the rule of thumb that we've stuck to for all of the time I've been here and it's always, um, worked well and always been passed by the AG. And I think, um, based on last night's discussion, I think overall, as an industry, I think this is the beginning of the conversation. I think we have a lot further to go. We talked about last night, we have a lot of commercial space in Burlington, but we don't have a lot of commercial space that's lab ready. And readiness and speed to market or speed to location was a major piece of, you know, the decisions, location decisions and, you know, there's, we may have a few buildings that we can retrofit into the space, but, you know, a lot of our buildings were seventies and eighties buildings and they don't have the floor to ceiling height. So just, you know, looking at how to, what, the readiness, um, that we can create here in town and, um-
Have, have you or anyone had discussions with architects or engineers that, you know, if they're converting a percentage of, let's say, a two hundred fifty thousand three-story building, they can convert part of it and apparently the biggest factor is the air handling, air change. There may be some other factors, plumbing and, uh, what have you. The plumbing shouldn't be a problem, electrical shouldn't be a problem, but the air handling ducts, there, there may be
Well, as mentioned last night, it's, you know, your, your average building, it's a couple times a day. I mean, for a life science building, it's a couple times an hour. And, you know, for the duct work, you just need the floor to ceiling heights, as well as just what they're bringing in. You know, some of these testing machines, you know, they're just, they're not a traditional cube by any means, so.
But you, not all businesses that are looking for a different FAR need, uh, an F, FAR of, you know, point eight or one point oh. Well, I guess we know that because there are twelve or fourteen businesses here now that meet that qualification that weren't looking for a bigger building or less parking. So I guess the point is that there's a certain segment of the business that will find that this is not enough for them and a certain segment that says, yeah, this is enough and it's a place to start. We're not going to be, please everybody, but we'll hopefully please some and they'll consider moving to Burlington.
A logistical question for, uh, logistical question for staff. If we do make this change, the way you're looking at it, do you, do you feel comfortable being able to calculate the number of parking spaces required?
The parking space calculation doesn't change. You, I mean, you still need to give a breakdown of space within the building to make the parking lot calculation. But that's more of a, you're not looking at percentages at that point and then getting to a whole percentage. It's, you have fifteen percent of laboratory space in your, your hundred square, a hundred thousand square foot building. Fifteen thousand is, um, laboratory, you're eligible for this provision, but with parking, you're still fifteen, one per thousand for the lab, laboratory space as proposed in the bylaw. So you have fifteen spaces for the lab and the rest. As, as we discussed last night, that things may modify and change a little bit in terms of, but it seemed like the direction was when the lab, labs seemed to grow into the office before the office grew into the lab. Based on the discussion last night.
I, I think I asked that question.
But we're, I mean, we're still going to be looking for, um, in the separate article seven piece of that breakdown in parking. But the planning board is with a lot of, not everything fits in a perfect box for parking. And in, in article seven, you have a lot of provisions and ability to find kind of what fits. And, you know, as discussed, if they truly come in and say, you know, we have a hundred thousand square foot building and we have forty people, you know, total, that, okay, well, forty spaces is not going to be enough for whatever comes next, but, you know, do you hold it in reserve? Do you, you know, I think you guys have enough protections and ability to be flexible in article seven for parking that we can, we're protected there.
And would you, one other question. Alright. Would you anticipate any new construction that took place for lab would be more vertical than horizontal? Or not? Do you think it's over two or three stories or?
What we're seeing typically is, and I've asked the question to- What we're seeing typically is, and I've asked the question to other folks in the, regionally, and what's being built, what's being built in the suburbs? What's being built in Kendall Square is going to be tall because they bought a postage stamp and they want to be on Kendall Square. But what we're seeing in the suburbs is less, less stories. I mean, I was going to kind of say Millipore is probably the tallest you're going to see. And that would, and from what's being built in the suburbs elsewhere is actually quite, that's a lot taller than, you're seeing four, maybe four. I mean, a lot of places are just two.
But to his point, if the floor to ceiling is greater, you have fewer stories, but you're going to have the same height building.
Yeah. Well, to purpose.
Because our height restrictions may kick in.
But my point, overall, if you look at the massing of Millipore, that's a big building for life science. Because you're going to see, and depending on how much of the building is that flex lab space, you don't want lab space on the fourth floor. You want lab space kind of on the first or second floor to be able to.
Well, depends on, you might want it close to the roof too.
Yeah, well.
Because of the, but that, that question was based on something you had brought up before, Jack. What if somebody builds at his lab and then decides they want to go back to the office? So if it was more vertical than horizontal, I was thinking maybe we could set aside some green space as emergency, you know, whatever. And, and not only that, but also have some extra green space. But so you're, you're thinking it's probably not going to be more than like three stories or four stories really, right?
But even if you're building office in the suburb, you're not seeing more than four stories in office, new office now. I mean, you look at the buildings in Network Drive and you look at the Keery buildings.
True.
I mean, they're also doing some R and D, but. For Burlington Woods, I mean, they're, those are, was that four?
It's probably taller, it's probably five or six.
No, it's not six. They can't go six in that location.
But they're converting to life science.
Anyway. But you're still going to be in the IG or IH. IH you can go higher, IG you can only go to 80 feet depending on how far you are from residential neighborhood, so. To your point, I think this, this doesn't handcuff anybody for that configuration. If you're looking to have more space to set aside, I mean, instead of a two-story building, maybe they build a three-story building. There's nothing in here that says they can't do that.
I, I foresee a problem that Mr. St. Clair brought up that where these buildings now are not being built by company XYZ, who was a life science company, but it's being built by the developer or investments, pension funds are buying in and supporting them. So the developer wants to build the building that can be marketed to the most number of life sciences companies, which means that developer or builder wants the maximum FAR flexibility. What we have is not giving them that maximum point eight or one or one, two. So will a developer or investors build the building under this zoning bylaw, which limits it, at least for now, to point five oh, to max out at point five oh. So the language of this does limit the market to the companies and limits the potential investors unless they can be very clever in their design.
I, I agree, it does handcuff some folks for flexibility in design. But what was mentioned last night was it's definitely a step in the right direction. It might not be where we need to go and if Bill Ricka's offering two oh, then they go to Bill Ricka. But, I mean, and also to the point that, you know.
Some company may not need the two oh to, they, they may be able to work perfectly fine.
Right, and maybe Burlington's.
And want to be closer to what we have.
I mean, and what was mentioned by folks that didn't sit here at our last meeting when we discussed, you know, Bill Ricka and Bedford are marketing quite a bit for Bill Ricka, to have these companies go to Bill Ricka and Bedford and offering quite a bit, including tax incentives. But they're, they're using, you're close to Third Ave in the district in Burlington Mall. So they're driving here and they're just driving through us.
Not getting the benefit of freight.
Yeah, they're not here, so.
They're not driving through us if they're coming from Lowell or Chelmsford.
Yeah, but.
They're driving here for lunch.
For lunch. Going to Kava.
It seems to me that you consider that, you know, they're taking advantage of our services. But in, on the other hand, they're supporting, you know, our restaurants and everything else.
I'm not complaining they're driving here, I'm just saying that if people are worried about traffic.
Sure.
Because the FAR is going up.
Yeah.
I think we're getting the traffic anyways because as the fellow from Spalding and Sly, Mr. Leclair?
St. Clair.
Sinclair.
Oak Claire was.
Oak, Oak Claire, St. Clair, we had two Claires, it was a little confusing.
That was Eclair, that guy.
Actually, we're saying that, that sometimes when they market places in, in, like Crosby Drive, for instance, they say, in very convenient to Third Avenue in Burlington.
Yeah.
In their literature, you know, so.
Close to Burlington.
So why not get it, take advantage of it?
You can be closer to Burlington, you can be in Burlington.
There was an article in the paper today that was at Assembly Mall in Somerville, that there's a big.
Assembly Square?
Taking a big chunk of that, yes.
Assembly Square?
That was in the Globe today.
Yes.
Oh, yes, Row, yes.
But you can lose too because Lexington, was it Shire? In Shire or left?
Somebody else go in.
So Paul, I, I didn't hear the rest of your statement, it took a big chunk of?
Assembly Square.
Who did?
I'm not sure, I, I didn't, it was in the newspaper today.
A, a life science company came out to.
Life science?
Oh, is that what you said? Okay, I just didn't, I didn't.
I know Partners has.
I think it was more specific called Biotech.
Okay. I think we'll finish each other's sentences and just talk about that, I was talking on that, thank you.
All right, you were there last night too, Bill, you wanted to add something into this?
Yeah, I, I took a look at the equation, I liked the equation, make it simple, I think it was option two. I think, Jack, you made a comment last night with regard to kind of your concern about bringing that up to one point oh because you open up the floodgates and then, you know, it's, it's all one. We've seen this before, right, we've seen this movie before and I'm not sure the, the entire audience got that, that the experience that you have and other folks here. Once that, if you say, let's open it up to the one, then everybody jumps in on the one, right, versus kind of getting there gradually. So I, I, I appreciated your comment on that. I, I thought about the parking as well and what we're trying to get to with, with the lab space. And, you know, we're talking about on a per kind of business, you're changing your, your parking spaces. And I kind of said, it's, it's, for me, I think, Ernie, you made the comment, it's kind of crazy, which said, you're talking about how many people do you have, right? So mostly we're, we're parking and driving. So if you say, what's your max, maximum occupancy of the building and then you kind of maxed out for there? Yeah, you know, something like that, so those are my thoughts there. And the only other thing I was thinking while, while the people were talking, and, and what's our sweet spot for that? Are we looking for the giant conglomerates that need that, you know, two-story air handling capability for manufacturing? Are, are we, because we don't have any land to put all these buildings at, which, like what they talked about, I think GE and Marlboro, right? They talked about that because they've got land out there.
We're not going to, we're not going to get that.
We're not playing in that space, but in the, in the point five, you know, you've, you've got kind of those, those companies that may go on a move from Kendall Square up to here, kind of in that medium level. You've got things where you could fit it into one story, I'm familiar with micro environments versus completely using the, the system air handlers. But you have micro environments which are plausible from room to room and don't require the big air handlers. So there's maybe that opportunity to fit into that sweet spot versus slipping everything on its head. But I thought it was a good, it was a good panel, very, very well done, great panelists and I, and I think you did a great job in moderating, so thank you.
Thank you.
They are, have developed, at least in the air conditioning, retrofit air conditioning that allows going through a much smaller aluminum tube. And they managed to do it without creating the, the high wind whistle noise. I'm not quite sure how they attenuate that, but they do it. And they're small things that you could hang either put under a window or, or hang off the side of a wall. So I think that we haven't seen all the engineers and architects address this problem fully yet. I do think that they will have answers for that before they force somebody to tear a building down.
True.
So I don't think we're that far off where these buildings will be quickly retrofitable for that use. We, we're not going to attract the person who needs a one point oh FAR, but we don't need to attract every possible business. If, if we, we want to be diversified, we do want to do something that attracts all those and displaces the other type of businesses either. So I, I think with this, and, and we'll see, I think we will attract a number that will help diversify and we'll see if it diversifies it to the level we want. And we can adjust later if we see we need something, do something different and this doesn't have a detrimental or negative impact on the town. We can make that change. But I, I, I'm not upset that some may think this is not a big enough step. I'm, I'm happy taking a small step, going towards something new.
You can always change it.
Yeah, we can always amend it up, but if we start high and allow something to be a grandfather, we can't kick them out. So we're doing two things, we're letting the industry know that, you know, we're open for that kind of business, provided your business fits in our design.
Yeah, I, I think the big, the big leap there is, is I, I think you, you said, Kristen, is that now you go from a bronze up to at least a gold because we, we have that in the bylaws. And I think even that is going to be a, a big leap from, from a branding and a.
Puts us on the Mass Bio Council's.
And then the gold, and that's what people will look at first and then say, it does if it doesn't. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Carol?
I haven't had a chance to watch last night's thing yet, so.
Good luck.
Yeah, exactly.
Two hours.
It's only two hours.
It's only two hours.
Live faster when you're a person.
But it was interesting.
If you're during this weekend snowstorm, you could watch it, you know.
It's interesting.
Just out of curiosity, has Scott indicated that they've had any interest as a result of the proposed changes at for?
Burlington Woods.
Burlington Woods, yes.
That was the pre-permitting you talked about.
Not yet.
Okay. Another question, since Kendall Square is kind of the bright shining star as far as, is being the incubator as far as biotech. Well, really it's the hospitals like Mass General and so forth, but because those people needed a place to locate, they're in Kendall Square. What, what are the ratios in those buildings? You know, are, are they, do they have very high occupancy? Or are they doing, are, are they doing the lab work there? And is it relatively low as far as the number of people per square foot or whatever?
So I did ask that question, not, last night we didn't get into that because we really got into what kind of the suburban market looks like. The Kendall Square market does not, will, Burlington will not look like Kendall Square. It just, and Kendall Square, right now, Boston is the epicenter of the world of life science right now. And Kendall Square is the address that everybody wants on their letterhead to be, I'm here. And so what people are building and the, I mean, last night they talked about the cost and capital that people are spending to, to be in whatever shape or form they can be in, in Kendall Square is astronomical, the amount. I mean, $800 a square foot plus, I mean, you, you're not, you can't build a $800 square foot building in Burlington. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, 25 Burlington Mall Road sold for 257 a square foot, which is good for us. But if you're building a building for 800 a square foot, you can't sell it for 200 a square, so. Anyway, but, and it's expensive to build, you know, laboratory new construction. And that was one of the reasons for new construction in the suburbs does need to command a slightly higher amount of density in order for it to be profitable to invest in the building. And I think we understand that we're not going to have a two-point oh building, we're not going to have a, you know, the buildings that are going out in Marlboro. We're not going to have giant manufacturing with a huge, we're not going to have a Shire looking building in Burlington. But there's a lot of opportunity within the space that I think we can provide. What was I saying? So the densities that you're seeing in Kendall Square are high and that is one of the pressures that's moving life science out to the suburbs at lower densities. So they, you have the room to do it.
So you say high, meaning what?
I, I don't know exactly, but it was, the, the amount, I mean, they're just, they want to be in Kendall Square. So they try to have as much, much as, many people as possible, but in order to actually, when these companies get a little bit bigger, they, they need more space and not pack.
One of the factors that we have to consider is traffic and parking. Kendall Square doesn't have either because it's public transportation. So we really, from that perspective, can't even consider ourselves in that neighborhood. It's just, doesn't work here.
No, I understand that, but I was just wondering what the density was in the buildings, whether, no matter how they get there. In other words, is there a, a lot of lab space or is it all offices or, or, you know?
The density of the lab spaces would be about the same because, I mean, or less in the suburbs.
When you say density, you're saying people per square foot?
People per square foot.
Yeah, number of people in a building, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But what they were mentioning is the, in office component and people are there, what did they say, 100?
They were going down to 125, which is probably too small, they're going up back up to 150.
Oh, that's ridiculous, but, you know, in the suburbs, we've always kind of looked at 300 a square foot for an employee in the suburban market. And they were saying it's between 300 and 500 in the offices in the suburban market. But it's a one per thousand or 1,500 in the la, in a lab space, if not less?
But not all labs are created equal.
Yeah, I, I mean, my, my, the company I worked for, for a long time, we had a place in Cambridge, Kendall Square. And it, it was, it was manufactured, but a small manufacturing and it was, you know, it was kind of like a 50/50, you know? You had a couple of floors for, for that and you had offices based in there, it was kind of a mixed bag. It was, and I would imagine it's, it's very similar.
Did some of the people in, that had worked in labs also have offices too?
Yeah, of course, of course, everybody did. Yeah, everyone did, everyone had an office. Everyone had a cube, at least.
Yeah, a cubicle, not necessarily, yeah.
Everybody had a place to go instead of just in the labs. Anything further, Paul?
That's usually the case, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would say, all right.
I don't have any questions, I, I think that this, it sounds like a measured and conservative step and I like that.
Yeah.
Zoning bylaw review committee. So the folks at home know who you are, if they don't already know, I'm sure they do, but for the record.
For the record, I'm Betsy Hughes, precinct seven and bylaw review committee, co-chair.
Shari Ellis, on the zoning bylaw review committee and the chair and town meeting member, precinct three.
Would you like to join in this conversation?
Certainly. First, I want to thank Kristen for all the work she put into that panel last night. I thought it was just, it was so well done. The panelists were different, professional.
Prepared.
And very well prepared and it was well moderated, so it moved along. So if you haven't watched it, I think you'll find it just very good, so thank you for that. I, I thought it clarified a lot of things from the safety, this is not your grandfather's lab anymore, to the whole issue of how do people work in 2019 in these new industries, clean industries, which is a very different way of working than I think most of us experienced as we came up through whatever world we came from. So I, I also applaud the effort to simplify. That's one of the mission's statements for the bylaw review committee is to be concise and to try and make things as simple as possible because they will complicate themselves all on their own. So I, I think that's great and I think that the second proposal is right on, so that's my input.
You're, you're talking, Betsy, number two?
Yeah. That's all I have to say.
Is that what you're going to say? I want to echo Betsy that the panel was very informative, I learned a lot and I have a lot more questions because of that.
It's only the beginning of the discussion, I think we all will be learn, learning about the industry.
And a couple of thoughts that were going through my head. Um, and a couple of thoughts that were going through my head, um, last night, um, and I guess it was, they were very confusing names, by the way, so I want to make sure I get the right person. I think it was David St. Clair?
Daniel St. Clair was, um...
Not decent.
Uh, no.
He was the, he's the one who kind of talked more about the square footages of, he's the...
He was the one to talk about kind of the market.
He was the real estate rental developer type guy.
Okay, so he was where I was focused, because I don't, I'm not really concerned with what goes on inside the building as far as what they do. That isn't really where my focus is at the moment. It's why we're trying to increase the size of the building and decrease the parking. Um, so that's kind of where I am, and trying to figure out how we attract people, because that's what they want, and do it responsibly. And what kept coming to mind was a couple of things, is parking is, is the main issue for me, and that, um, one of the comments I think, um, Dr. Weiner actually said was, you know, Leahy's been doing this kind of research forever, um, and I keep seeing Leahy grow and grow and grow, and I see people, Leahy employees crossing streets because they're parking in other buildings, and so I question how we are dealing with the parking as far as that's growing. Um, is this going to create any kind of issue going down the road? So, that was kind of a thought in my head.
I don't know how many square feet of Leahy is devoted to research.
Right. Well, that, again, it was just a, a thought going through my head as far as, you know, okay, there's research going on there now, and as they buy up the whole block of land on that side of Mall Road, you know, what part is research? What part is just, you know, more folks coming for more appointments and things like that? But, um, and the other, uh, one of the other discussions that go back to, um, Mr. St. Clair was sixty-forty is what he talked about for lab versus office. How do we define what an office is? Uh, I think that's what he said, kind of the average ratio is, is lab space is sixty, office space is forty. How do we determine, um, who's in the lab? And I think Ernie and, and, and Bill were talking about, you know, do you have one office, but you have the lab space? And so it goes back to the occupancy that, that Mr. Gaffney said, is that, to me, this is more, should be tied into an occupancy, that, so, we look at the site plan, we give them the FAR they want, and then the building gets occupied, and the building inspector gives an occupancy permit for X number of people.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and...
Right, right, okay.
They can't go over that.
That's why I asked that question.
They can go under that.
Good point.
But, so how does, is, is, should that be tied in?
I was giving the thought that first to his sixty-forty, he's a developer, he wants to build a building that's attractive to just about everybody.
Mm-hmm.
But we're not concerned about attracting everybody.
Everybody, right.
To the point about how do we question a particular applicant about their employee ratio? He wasn't thinking about that.
No.
He was thinking about how he can get somebody interested in that piece of paper, that, that piece of property.
That piece of property, right.
It's, as far as us, we have some discretion in the parking, but they, as a company too, they want to be sure that they have enough parking for the people, so I don't think they're going to deliberately lie to us. The point came out is that the use ratio, office to lab, can change year to year, depending upon their need.
Right.
Now, they did point out that the use generally is going to more lab, less office. If that's the case, we don't have a parking problem. If it goes in the reverse, we do have a parking problem.
Well...
Which is why, you know, Kristen just mentioned, if we see that as a potential, we have to ask them to hold some parking in reserve. In other words, keep it grass, don't pave it.
But if you need it.
But if you need it, because we don't want you to see parking in, you know, other people's lots or on the streets, or parking unsafely in a parking lot. How much discretion does town meeting want to give, uh, the boards? Because as St. Clair said, they don't want to have to go to town meeting. If it says you got to go through the town meeting process, they're not even going to go in. So, do you want to have some type of a thing that requires a joint meeting of the select, when the board of health, the, the planning board, and they have to give a two-thirds vote to give them more numbers? Uh, I, I don't know how town meeting would agree to give up some of their zoning authority to accomplish that. Is, is that something town meeting would want? I don't know.
I was thinking more along the lines of, of, you're going back to the conversation of it's the developer coming in and trying to make a spec building to try and attract a few different, smaller life sciences. And so you don't know what the ratios of the occupancies of all the different ones are going to be. So, maybe we're not creating that kind of building, maybe we're creating the smaller building that is just the one life science, you know? I don't know. I don't have answers to my questions.
Or multitenant.
They just raised a bunch of questions for me that I didn't have before, but I think it's a, it's a good questioning to have.
The developer could tell us what his maximum occupancy is, and we could...
Go from there.
They can park that, or park and reserve park that.
You, you talk about occupancy when you do the site plans, of what the buildings are, or not typically?
Well, based, based on the square footage, yeah.
There are ITE standards that if it is a standard office building, you can expect X number of people, therefore, X number of trips at Peacock, or X number of parking spaces. And, you know, thirty years ago, when I was first on the planning board, an office space was used quite differently than today. You know, twenty-five, thirty percent of an office building was storage and big file cabinets. Well, you don't see those anymore, so they, they get more people in there.
Right, well, the, I guess the other gentleman, Dr. Auclair?
Auclair, yeah.
Auclair.
It was an intentional confusion.
And they were sitting next to each other, so that didn't help, but I'm, and I don't have the eyesight to see that far, and I'm like, oh, who's that? Um, but he, he, that gentleman talked about, um, that the one PhD, and for every one PhD, you've got ten, ten support staff, uh, and so that's your lab space. You know, is the ten people in the lab space in, I don't know.
Could be admin, too.
Again, so how do you determine the occupancy and how many people are going to have for these parking spaces? Uh, it's just, you know, I, they're just questions I have.
So, let me just make one comment, because, um, and, and I want to ask the board as well, if we don't make the change to allow lab a lower parking ratio, lab is just governed under the same parking ratio as offices. So, therefore, we, we, by regulation, are requiring more parking and more pavement than we, they potentially may need.
They may need.
So, by lowering it, we're just saying, we understand the dynamic, don't build that much parking. Um, and I don't remember the last tenant who came in, or the last developer who wanted to build a building with, for, and market to potential tenants, that said, I want less parking. Um, I mean, if you look at Oracle, we had a long, long discussions about, do you actually need it? Do you actually need it? No, I mean, if you have these people not actually working at the place, they work from home, oh, end of quarter, we need a million parking spaces. And you drive by there every day, a third of their, if not more, a third of their parking space are empty. Um, and I guess to be, there are very few sites in town, take Leahy completely out of the equation. That's, that's an outlier of, of parking and management, that I, I, I don't think we can compare the average to. But, um, if a developer's building a building, they want to attract uses, they also, I mean, you have parking ratios that all the tenants are going to want, and they're usually going to be higher than what we want. We don't want everyone to build at five per thousand, just because we want to attract tenants. We want to make sure that they have enough, that they're not overburdening their neighbors, but they're not paving everywhere.
But part, part of the reason in, in Mr. St. Clair kind of went in that direction, but not fully, as you build more parking, you build more pavement. As you build more pavement, you have more runoff, and the cost of, uh, putting that back into the ground goes up exponentially. So, forcing them to build more parking than they need adds considerably to the cost of that development in a portion of the place, which is totally unproductive to them.
Yeah.
So, they're trying to avoid that cost.
I'd never want to build more parking.
We never force people to build more parking.
I, I agree.
No, but, but if somebody who has no experience in Burlington looks at our regulations, they say that's it. They got to look deeper at the regulations and say that, yeah, we'll let them build this.
Our, our regulations are actually, and correct me if I'm wrong, a little opposite most of the towns around us. We have a maximum number of parking spaces. A lot of them have minimum number of parking spaces for buildings.
Right.
Right? Which, way back in the Terry's Old Era, we, we did that to, to try and keep the amount of pavement down.
Right. Nobody wants to be the, the Wilbur Showcase Cinema Movie Theater.
Well, the old game was, the bigger the building got, the more parking you need.
Right.
And eventually, you ran out of space, and that limited the size of your building.
But, for instance, as an example, Millipore, what did it, what was the percentage, twenty percent, twenty to twenty-five percent of their building is lab space? They have one of, a whole parking lot they didn't build. It's just in reserve, and, and it's, you know, somewhere between eighty-five and over a hundred spaces that they didn't build, because they don't need it, but they could build it. But we required them to have parking for two point five per thousand, because that's the only ratio we have.
But there was something other, unique about there to, where they couldn't put the building anyway, so it could be reserved. Uh, by forcing them to hold some spaces in reserve, you've now limited the size of their building. So, if they want a bigger building, they can't do it if we forced it to hold spaces in reserve. So, there's a little catch-22 there.
The parking's not what's holding them back for building size, and on that side.
Well, if they run out of land, yeah.
Millipore?
Yeah, my point is just...
Millipore's building, as you know, building out a big space there, and I walk up there sometimes, and, because I like to go down in the park and, and up, and their parking lot is generally full, but not, there, there are spaces. In other words, it's not so full that somebody's parking in the driveways and that kind of thing. But I was surprised at the size of the addition they're putting on.
Right, and my only point there was that they built out the parking, but they also have over a hundred spaces that they didn't build, and their building works just fine.
Sure. And, and Oracle, I think, was a nu, a unique situation, in that they said their, their need was for four times a year.
Quarterly meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is crazy, crazy. It's crazy to build a parking and not use it, except for, you know, we, that would be something that...
But, but, but they're in the building, and, and that's what they wanted, and we've got, what, five thousand people working for Oracle in Burlington?
Yeah, but...
And they're all pretty well paying jobs.
But Oracle is thinking, if they decide to move and sell the building, they want to have enough parking to a prospective buyer.
Well, it's true.
And they use the building different than they do. Yeah, so, that, that's an investment that they don't want it to be a good elephant.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, see, see what you started? Do you have another question like that?
Do that again, Shari.
Absolutely not now.
Well, our state representative tells us everything's going to change fairly quickly, because he said self-driving cars are coming and so forth, so we don't know, we're just planning on what we have right now. But, uh, there's one that was on last night, where they, you're going to get your groceries, you know, the little thing comes and it's got...
Stop and shop's going to, but you have to be home to...
You put your credit card in and, and so forth, so...
But you have to unload the car. So, us old people may not want to carry all those bundles into the house.
What old people?
Who carries them now?
You're talking about...
You're done?
I think that's...
I thought you had a bunch of questions. You only asked two.
Yeah.
She's smart.
Holding the other ones in reserve.
So, what questions you have, you're not asking us, you're going to raise a town meeting just to confuse us.
Shari knows more than she reveals.
Are you guys meeting before town meeting?
Yeah.
Monday evening, we're meeting in the cafeteria at six forty-five. Okay. We gave ourselves forty-five minutes.
Six forty-five? Is it six forty?
Six forty-five, yeah. Six forty-five to seven thirty.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, we gave ourselves forty-five minutes to wrap it all up and...
You got the space reserved?
Yes.
Good.
We could have food like they had last night?
Do you have leftovers?
We do.
That's our budget, right? I just submitted the budget. There's no budget for food.
Yeah.
No. You can, you're welcome to bring a cake if you'd like.
It's a cafeteria, there should be food there already.
That's what I was thinking.
Scraps, scraps.
You don't want the kids' food. You don't want that food.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for your work.
Anyone else in the audience who was waiting to speak on this? No, okay. Uh, why don't we put this on the table so we can take care of these folks?
Well, don't, I mean, what's left but the motion?
What's left but the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Yep. Um, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second. Removed in second to close the public hearing, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Seven zero zero.
Mr. Chairman, I further make a motion to recommend favorably on the petition to amend the zoning bylaw in Article Two, definitions in Article Four, use regulations to address and define uses pertaining to life sciences.
In its latest iteration, presented to us as number two?
Yes.
Second. It's removed in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Seven zero zero.
Okay.
We know. Thank you very much.
Are we on page nine?
So, what page? Page nine, did you say?
We did, we did cover.
So, we're going to...
Okay, uh...
Next page, page nine.
Have a motion, take items seven C through seven G together?
Second.
Moved, so moved, rather.
Do I have a second? Public hearing, application for special permit pursuant to section six point one point one point two, expansion of a non-conforming...
Do we want to vote?
That's a miss, it's non-conforming. Vote on, oh, okay. Uh, the motion to take out of, to discuss together, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Seven zero zero. Okay, public hearing, application for approval of special permit, section six one one two, expansion of a non-conforming use, not a non-confirming use. Uh, spell, spell check overrides terribly sometimes, of the zoning bylaws. Twenty-four Terry Ave, BAPA Corporation applicant, public hearing, application for approval of special permit pursuant to section six point one point two point one, non-conforming structures and premises of the zoning bylaws. Twenty-four Terry Ave, BAPA Corporation applicant, public hearing, application for approval of special permit pursuant to section four point four point one point eleven, discharges from man-made structures into the wetlands of the zoning bylaws. Twenty-four Terry Ave, BAPA Corporation applicant, public hearing, application for approval of special permit pursuant to section eight point two point zero, Wetlands District of the zoning bylaws. Twenty-four Terry Ave, BAPA Corporation applicant, and finally, public hearing, application for approval of site plan. Twenty-four Terry Ave, BAPA Corporation applicant. You have other boards to go to?
We are presently before the conservation commission.
And so, you're not finished there?
You're not finished, no.
Okay. And this does involve wetlands, so, okay, that makes sense.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman.
Evening.
For the record attorney, Mark Vaughn, tonight representing BAPA Corporation, Northern Business Machines, in connection with this application. David Romero with Commonwealth Engineering, I know you know David as well, the engineering.
He was here earlier, I was wondering why he was hanging around. He just enjoyed our company so much.
We are happy to be before you tonight in connection with the property at twenty-four Terry Avenue. Unfortunately, our client is not here tonight. They had a prior travel plans to be away, away this week. Both Bill and his daughter Amy, who I know landing staff have met. They are the owners of the Northern Business Machine operation that takes place at twenty-four Terry Avenue. They have owned and operated the business for quite some time. It's their corporate headquarters. They're a privately owned, family-held business. They've been in business since nineteen eighty-five, but in Burlington for thirty years. And I think since nineteen ninety-four at this location.
Just say, yes, just ninety-four.
They, a administrative sales company focusing on office equipment, copiers. A lot of service of copiers and, actually, I believe actually the town of Burlington is a customer of theirs as well.
We are.
They are a leader in their industry and they really are at a point now where at their building, they're kind of running out of space. They're not looking to expand their operations, but simply to be able to have more space, to be able to function and be able to just breathe a little easier. So what they're looking to be able to do with this location, Mr. Chairman and board members, is to provide a very modest-sized addition at this existing site. This plan here shows the general location of where we're talking about, but I'm going to turn it over to David, but I just wanted to give you a sense of what we're talking about here. This is Terry Avenue, if you're coming off, you know, Cambridge Street would be up here. This is at the end of Terry Ave, right where you're making that turn onto Long Street. So the building is right here. More orange or darker color here shows the footprint of the proposed addition. This might be a little bit more helpful just to give you a sense of the building. I'm sure that many of you have been down this area, you've seen it, but this is the building here, Northern Business Machine, right at the corner of Long and Terry Ave. It's a building, they, they take a lot of pride in, in the appearance of it. They maintain the landscaping and really, you know, try to keep it up as nicely as they can. It's an older building, but, you know, one which, you know, they're the owners of the building. They're not just a tenant or anything, they, they own and operate it as well as the business. So what they're looking to do is a modest addition of about fifty-five hundred square foot footprint that would be located here. So this would be in the, the far back of the building, so.
Two stories? Is that two stories?
Two-story addition, yeah. About fifty-five hundred square foot, uh, floor, so.
So fifty-five is the footprint or the total square footage?
Fifty-five is the footprint, so it's about eleven thousand square feet. And the building addition would happen all within existing paved surface. This is parking area that's out here today. So the building addition would be fully within the paved area. Guys out there, we're not looking to encroach any further into the, the wetland area or the, or the buffer or anything like that. So there's a number of benefits to the proposal in terms of stormwater upgrades and whatnot. So perhaps rather than to be repetitive, I could have David, you know, just walk through the plan a little bit. There are a number of permits, as obviously you read as part of the agenda there, Mr. Chairman, but for a, a project of pretty modest size and scope, just given the uniqueness of this site in terms of the, some non-conforming aspects of the property, that's what triggered the need to apply for the, the number of permits that we have. So with that, David, if you could.
So as Mark mentioned, we're essentially replacing what right now is a paved area right here, replace it with rooftop. So we're not encroaching any further off to, in any direction to the wetlands or the coffee line.
Is that corner going into the buffer?
Yes, now, there is a, there is a buffer to the RO. This is actually a district line right here.
Okay.
This is IG, this is RO. So there is a, there is a buffer here. And currently, the, the parking area does encroach in that. And so we are not going to further any encroachment, we're basically holding that line. So we're again, we're replacing parking with, with building in this, in this area here. And that's what, this is what you see here in the darker color. And in doing that, you see the gray area here is all the existing pavement and parking. We're not going to touch that. Uh, but we are proposing some improvements to the stormwater system. Right now, there is no, there's a formal system, but it, there's no treatment at all. There's an existing catch basin down here and that discharges directly to the stream. Basically, all the parking area goes there, as well as the building. It all basically goes to here and concentrated out. So we're proposing to first replace that catch basin with a, with a fully compliant catch basin, with a deep enough sump, the gas trap. And then following that, we're going to put a water quality unit behind that. So we're going to give as much treatment as we can before that discharge is off. In addition to that, we're going to put the new rooftop into an infiltration system running along right here. And the existing roof, we're going to put another infiltration system to pick all that up. So all this water that used to go off into the wetlands will now be recharged into the ground. So based on that itself is, is, we're relieving TSS, we're getting rid of that on, on site. As addition to the catch basins and to the quality quality system, we're really going to be improving the, the runoff off the site. Just wanted to point out that we're not looking for any additional parking, but if, we are actually below the minimum. Minimum is sixty-three. We have sixty right now. We did show a little dashed area up here that if we do have to have the three spaces, we do have room to park to, to build that parking area right here. And we are before conservation now because we do have streams. And this light green area here is all a wet, wetland area with the darker green is, is all upland area. So giving that, I guess.
The paved area parking is that little corner if it's non-conforming?
Yes, right here.
And so you're expanding a non-conforming pavement to a non-conforming building?
No, it's, no, expanding.
Any non-conformers. We're basically trading paved area into a building area to a rooftop instead of paved area.
So I wouldn't use the word expanding, I would say, yeah, right.
You're expanding in height. You're expanding in height.
So there's no expansion of a non-conforming use?
You're expanding the size.
We applied for a alteration, expansion of a non-conforming use.
So what, so define the word.
Hold on. Don't confuse use and premises.
Premises, I guess.
So the non-conforming structure or premises, which is that section of the bylaw, is the premises or structure is non-conforming. It doesn't matter if it's premises or structure that's not conforming. It's one of those two things is not conforming. It continues to be, except in the former, it was premises. In the latter, as proposed, it's the structure.
Right.
The use is a separate item.
Correct.
Outside of that, and this whole property is in the wetlands district, which allows for flagpoles and ponds and.
Not much else.
Stuff like that, so the whole thing is non-conforming for a use. And that's the expansion of the non-conforming use.
Now, I have a question. But the purpose, I mean, it's always our goal with non-conforming uses is that eventually you want them to go away. And it seems to me that it's a lot harder to make a building go away than it is to make a paved piece of, a piece of parking lot go away. So it does seem to me that it is an increased non-conformity. I'm not, I mean, I don't know exactly how you want to phrase it, but it definitely seems like we are increasing the non-conformity and certainly making it harder in the future to get rid of the non-conformity.
And that's a valid point. But my point was that it, they can propose it based on.
Yes, I understand.
And I think it would be worth the applicant going through, because we've had a lot of discussions about it. It's an old site, just like all other old sites, they don't have enough drainage, they don't. But they have, there is benefits to some of the improvements.
Right, I understand.
That we, you know, you have to weigh the whole thing, but it's, it's definitely a valid point.
Before we move on, just because I know we're not going to vote tonight, one thing I would like to see when you come back is I would like to see the view of the back of the building and how close you are to the residential neighbors and what the residential neighbors see when they look from their property at your property now and what they'll see in the future if this is built.
Sure. There's a fair amount of wooded area back there. It's actually a pretty thickly settled wooded area. I was just actually chatting with one of the neighbors that lives behind and they did note during this time of year that when the leaves are down, you know, you can see through to the building. But it, it, there's no home within like an immediate area back there. Maybe next time we could bring an aerial that kind of shows that area, but.
That would be helpful and, and of course, we'll want to talk to the neighbors as well.
Yeah. But.
Could I, could I get, could I expect, understand the history of how the non-conformity came about?
The.
The use of the.
From what I understand, Joe, the building.
Non-conforming structure or use or both?
The non-conforming pavement.
Current existing non-conformity with the encroachment onto the buffers.
The buffers.
So the structure as opposed to the, is it, is that use allowed in the zone? Is that what you mean?
No, not the use, no.
Just the structure.
How the parking lot, how the parking lot got into that buffer.
Historically, how that encroachment was allowed to happen.
Okay. Yep.
Well, it's all wetlands down there, as you know.
Oh, I know.
Just here and back there and.
Right.
My, my understanding, Joe, is that it was built prior to the zoning bylaw being in place that either, either the wetlands district, which didn't allow that use, it was built prior to that and then prior to any buffer requirement or.
Okay, so the buffer that's indicated on there is, is something that, that buffered the, the residential buffer.
Yeah.
Was not in existence when that parking lot was built, is that what you're saying?
That's my understanding, but you know what? Between now and the next meeting, I will verify that.
Okay.
I mean, if, if you guys can provide when the parking lot was built.
Well, I, I also, you know, I wasn't sure that that was. It wasn't something that was just paved after the fact and never, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, that definitely.
That it was actually a lot, right.
That definitely has happened around town. I don't, I don't think this was one of them, but we'll just, if we get some history, we'll find out.
That's, that's, I, I, that's a cut through to go to down Terry Ave nor to my homes. And it is, it's a really not a walk, walk-up area. The, the, does the land go all the way down a long street? Because there's just woods there.
Yeah, so the, the landfall is this entire kind of triangular shape.
No, I understand, but I'm, I'm talking about down towards the neighbors. Do they know, is that all their property?
The neighbors are back here.
Well, how far, that top corner?
There is a neighbor up here as well. I think the homes.
Yeah, there's a little street there that's on the other side of that that goes in, there's few houses. But there's no houses immediately right around there. To me, you're kind of squa, you're swapping a paved area for a roof.
Well, right, and everything that goes along with that. I'm, I'm kind of perplexed as to why all these years, they, the, the area was sufficient. They're not adding any people or any additional product in there. You're just saying they want more room to move around inside. All these years, they haven't, in my opinion, I, I mean, I think that these copy company, I, I'm surprised these copy companies are still in business, quite honestly, because I, I would, I thought they were almost anti, you know, they were almost obsolete, you know, a lot of these, you know, they were.
They did tell us also that they took on a, a new manufacturer. So that is dictating some of the additional warehouse and storage space that they need. But they're saying that their head count is not increasing, so their employee head count is staying the same. Most of their employees, by the way, are out servicing copiers and whatnot. They're in their personal vehicles doing it. I mean, this is kind of a, their hub, if you would, but it's not as if they're, you know, keeping those vehicles parked overnight or anything like that.
My concern is, again, with that, that, you know, maybe additional, additional product in there, additional machines in there. I know there's a showroom and I know people go down to the showroom. More machines, maybe, you know, creates more traffic of people going down. Maybe not more employees per se, but maybe more car traffic. And, and the reason why I bring that up is I know, I've been down there a million times. I have a lot of friends in that area that it's, it's a problem. I mean, it's, it's a traffic problem in the morning. It's a traffic, those poor people that live in the residential area down, they have to endure, like, you know, tractor trailers dropping product off, dropping machines off, dropping, you know, supplies off to all those buildings down there. That, I, you know, I know that ra, is it a radon company, the radon, whatever that company is, they got a chain link fence with, with bobbed wire. It looks, it looks like a, it looks like a high-security prison down there.
Yeah, it's just.
It's a nightmare.
Storage company or something.
That's, or that's, that's on the side, the other side of Terry Ave.
The name of the building now has changed from radionics to Cosman.
Okay, yeah, well, whatever that building is, I think it was radionics that had.
It did.
It had the bobbed wire and all that stuff on it. I'm pretty sure it's still there.
Yep.
Maybe we check into even just that and say, well, is that necessary anymore to have bobbed wire on the top of the chain link fence?
It was some crazy New Jersey corporation that bought it and they're gone now.
They said at the time that it was.
Well, no, the other side. Right across us, right across us.
Was it the vehicles or the fact that they manufactured these, these medical things?
I don't know, they just said that they were getting a lot of people coming down and damaging their vehicles and so forth. Because as you know, it's kind of a back area.
I'll be honest, I, I don't think that should exist. I, I don't think anybody should be having bobbed wire where you've got people, you know, that live in those areas and people that are, I mean, what's the bobbed wire going to cut people up as, you know, as they jump in the fence?
Keep them out.
It's now, you know, this is a, this is part of the overlay. And this is part of the overlay down there. And that overlay, certainly, we shouldn't be having bobbed wire and chain link fence. I know that's off the track a little bit, but that's outrageous and within the overlay district. I don't understand how that even exists. I, just driving down there when this all came about and, and with that, the new storage and, you know, that new storage is going to, is going to draw some additional traffic down there. We, we're also dealing with that urgent care center that's going to draw some additional traffic down there, so. These, you know, we've got to be really careful in that area right now.
I don't see this being a traffic issue. I mean, I, you know, but we'll have Bill and Amy or one of them at the next meeting. They can, you know, speak directly to, you know, what it is that is motivating them to do the addition. But it, from what I understand, it's not to be able to, you know, have more, you know, output or, you know, more traffic or anything, but it's really just for the business operation to breed.
But my fear is with the new company online, they maybe have more machines, which means more showroom, you know, more.
It has to be a reason for the more building.
Which means that more showroom is going to mean more people, you know, driving in and out, more customers driving in and out to go to the showroom and.
I think we can probably get that explanation from the owners themselves next week, whether they may be dropping a line or bringing a new line in, who knows?
With that, can you just pick that thing up, that diagram up again? Can you tell me what is on the lower quadrant there? I know the, the residential homes are right where your hand is. Down below, closest to the.
No, that's, that's, that's woods.
What is there? It's, it's wetlands.
That's all downhill from the center of town.
So right here is all just wetlands?
Yeah. It's actually all wetland.
It's woods.
From up in Weber, I mean, that's a high area up there, all the water just.
All down, all down.
I just wanted to know, thank you.
Paul, Paul's water comes lying down.
That's absolutely right, yeah.
That's true. That's exactly where everything comes down. Paul's running downhill, yep.
And you can tell when he's watering the garden.
Exactly.
All right.
I'm running downhill.
Okay.
I just want to hear from the neighbors.
Okay.
Would you like departmental notes?
Yeah, departmental notes, see, that would be nice, thank you.
Well, you know, Inspector Buildings has no issues or objections. DPW is favorable with conditions, are those just standard?
Yes.
Fire Department is favorable. Board of Health favorable with conditions, which are standard. And then Conservation is favorable with condition and that condition is.
We should read that one, yeah.
Well, we haven't heard.
Is.
We're not complete with conservation, are we?
No, we opened the hearing, we actually are going to be making some curbing modification, improvements.
That's, that's the con, is, is regarding curbing. Given the existing bituminous curb has mostly been broken and pushed into the wetlands presumably, presumably by snowplows, the commission will be requiring more durable curbing, most likely sloped granite. And also a submission of a snow management plan will also be required.
Josh, you were going to say something on the DPW conditions?
No, I was referring to the, I just wanted to make sure that we read the conservation, the conservation.
That'll be turtle-friendly curbing down there.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, just one, one comment on the traffic. What I see is the folks that are employed there, actually, in the morning, they come up Great Pine and then they come over down Leonard.
Leopold.
Leopold Street and down.
Long Street is, is one of the.
To Long and to there, so, you know, I, I, when I see them coming in and I say, you know, I, I know why they go that way because they don't want to wait for the extra light down at that point. But it's kind of frustrating where you, you, you've got that and you, you've got the, as you go down Leopold, you kind of get that crazy curve, right? It's a, it's a, it's a dangerous area and I think if we can keep the cars off of there as they're coming in, particularly when they come in, it's the morning where the, where the kids got, the school bus stops right along that way. So, yeah, when you see the, and, and you can tell it's them because they're marked with their, with their cars and trucks there. So it's not something like.
Oh, it's got their logo on the side of the vehicle?
So, you know, it's them coming up the hill.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so maybe there's something.
So they either got to remove the logo or rewrote the cars.
Exactly. So maybe just, I mean, from a neighborhood standpoint, if they go right by, by Kathy's house there, they'd swing right by down and that's, that's the route they take. And that's the same route that the bus takes right there and then the, the bus stops right at the end of, right at the end of the street.
So you're saying, Bill, if they're coming from the Bill Ricka.
That's correct.
That they would.
They take a right.
Instead of coming down to Terry Ave to take the right, they would cut through that way?
Yep, they cut through neighborhoods that way.
Okay.
So that's something, maybe.
That's certainly something that we could talk to the owner.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just maybe just along the frontier, I, I go by there quite a bit myself. You know, as, as you come around, you come down Terry Ave fine, but once you hit that, that area, You know, as, as you come around, you come down Terry Ave fine, but once you hit that, that area, it would be nice if you had some, you know, some, maybe some, some trees here. Instead of just the low bushes, but maybe some, some taller trees just along that edge there, just to, to buffer that a bit, you know?
You can talk to them next week on that, uh, they seem to pay attention to landscaping, so that may be.
No, they do a great, they do a great job there, it's just, and, and like I said, I agree with you, they're, they're, they don't use the parking lot, uh, all the time with the cars. It's, it's usually never filled up, never seen it filled up.
Right, yeah, it doesn't, it's not normally full, yeah.
I've never, I've never seen it even half full, pretty much, you know what I mean?
They drive down to the shortcut, pick up their supplies from there, go out on the road.
I mean, a lot of people walking their dogs around there, you know.
Bill was front of the street from there.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, well, you, you mentioned a neighbor, so this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak? Yes, I see a hand in the back.
Yes.
If you cut him up, Kathy, and introduce and let the people in the tele- television audience know who you are. Do you wanna sit there or?
Thank you. Kathy O'Neil, thirty-one Arthur Woods Ave. First of all, I wanna thank all of you, because all of you seem to take a real interest, and a lot of you hit on the points that I was gonna bring up tonight. My house is one of the houses that is probably three, one of the three closest to the property. I do have to say, NBM is a good neighbor. They do take care of the property. The building you're talking about with the bobbed wire is probably the worst tenant down there. Bobbed wire, it's a mess.
When did that bobbed wire go up, Kathy?
Been there for years, for years. Trucks are in and out of there, there's people in the parking lot, the language is atrocious. They don't pick up after themselves, their alarms go off on a regular basis, and you can't sleep with your windows open when the weather gets warm, because they must be loading trucks or something, and you hear these, like, iron wheels going and going and going, and it starts at six o'clock in the morning. So they're terrible neighbors, their sprinklers are on all the time when we have our water vans, so that's, that's an aside. Along that same vein, though, my.
Has the tenant changed in recent years there?
Not that I know of, and it really does look like a prison. It's embarrassing. It's, I, you know, I say, gee, I'd love to send somebody else, somebody around the other way, but Arthur Woods Ave is such a big hill, and it's so dangerous to get out, whether you go to Grape Pines or over Arthur Woods, you can't do it. So it's, you know, through the buildings we go. It has its benefits on the weekends, there's not a lot of traffic. It's a place for the people to go and walk their dogs, so, so that is a benefit. I think my biggest concern with NBM is the two-story, um, structure. We're already dealing with a lot down there. Storage, the storage company just added on that huge structure, which I must say, they did a nice job on the perimeter. But I almost died when I drove down from the, from my neighborhood out and saw that middle structure. It looks like an airplane hangar. So I'm hoping that when it's finished, there's gonna be some trees or something that's going to block that a bit. It's really not, uh, the perimeter is nice, but that middle building is not so nice.
Actually, along that line, Kristen, I think, 'cause I think, was it Josh or Kristen, I had addressed that with, because I, I said the exact same thing, and I never even talked to her about that. I was coming from that direction, I'm like, we had specifically said, we do not wanna see that middle building when this project is done.
It was gonna be a fence or something there.
It was gonna be, whether it's wrought iron, whatever it was, there was gonna be something blocking that, so that.
Oh, and self-storm, sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, so we, so from that view, you weren't gonna be able to see that middle building, because it's horrible looking.
Yeah, no, the guy, there's, there's two gates, I think at least.
Yeah, when you brought it up, um, Jo- Josh is talking to the architect, and the architect literally calls like once a week saying, do I really have to do this?
Well, yeah, they, yeah, the construction team.
So their conditions, their conditions they didn't do.
We weren't supposed to see that middle building.
I don't think it's, um, completed yet, though, right?
And they need, they haven't put the gate up.
Yeah, the gate hasn't been installed, but they have two, like, yeah, there's two, like, really nice-looking gates that were approved part of the design, you know, the town center.
Okay.
Design, you know.
Okay, so we, we should revisit, but not tie up their time here, this is a different project.
No.
But thank you for bringing that up, Kathy.
Yeah, so, so beyond that, um, you know, we do deal, and Bill, you may have experienced this, but in the mornings, you can't get out. There's eighteen-wheelers blocking the street, you're sworn at, you're given the middle finger. So it's, my concern is that while NBM is a good neighbor, they do take good care of their property. I would love to see trees in the front. Their entrance is so tiny, they have the stop sign on our end. The cars are trying to get in and out, the trucks are trying to get in and out, it's a bottleneck. It's, it's really a mess if anybody went by there in the morning, uh, any weekday. So I would love to see trees there, but my concern is that because this storage company just put on their huge addition, and now NBM is asking for an addition, making it the first two-story in that area. How long is it gonna be before the other buildings come before you and ask for two stories? And how much are we supposed to endure in that neighborhood? It's one of the worst entrances in the entire town, and I feel like we really have been overlooked. I know it's, um, zoned industrial, so we live with it. But my thoughts were that years ago, it was supposed to be part of the master plan, the overlay, and instead of it getting better, to your point, Barbara, it's getting worse. And I have the same fear that by adding this second story, it makes it a bigger problem, number one. And number two, those other buildings are gonna be right around the corner, asking to do the same thing. And that, those buildings down there, Iron Mountain and the one across from it, um, not Cosman, but the other one, the huge trucks, the dumpsters out front, the trash, it's embarrassing. For anyone who lives in that neighborhood, it is embarrassing to have people come, and it also has a direct impact on the value of the properties in that neighborhood. So I'm hoping that you guys will take this into consideration, you sounded so thoughtful tonight. You really gave consideration to what's going on down there. It's a big problem, and it is a cut-through, Paul, as you said. So, you know, there's a lot to be dealt with. The eighteen-wheelers come right into the neighborhood to turn around.
Which building are those eighteen-wheelers going?
Not Cosman, the one to the, well, Cosman also, but it seems the one, is it, it used to be United Distributors, I don't think that's the name anymore.
No, I think it's like an office.
One closer to Cambridge Street?
Used to be a tile company, but it's now.
It used to be a tile company, yeah, United Distributors.
Now I think they do office furniture, maybe.
I think it is a furnish, an office furniture company.
Bill, are we talking close to Cambridge Street from Cosman?
But the big trucks come into the residential neighborhood to turn around?
The building.
My house is on that corner, so it's like this Dale Street, you had asked the name of the street, Paul, and then there's Arthur Woods and Long continues straight. So it's sort of a, could almost be a circle, and they go up there to turn around.
The building is right opposite this, for some reason, they back the eighteen-wheelers up. It's, it's, the way it's positioned, in order to get the trucks in there, they back them up on Terry Avenue. And so it's, you know, how, more than not, when you get down there, you have to wait, 'cause the guy's back, and if he's new, he may take three shots, you know, before he gets back.
Often mornings, there's three trucks down there, and, you know, two in the street, one backing in, and you're waiting, you're trying to get to work or whatever it is. You can't get by, they pull right in front of you, you get the middle finger, you get the sweers, and you get delayed by ten minutes. And you can't go out over Arthur Woods on a weekday morning, because it's too busy, it's just too dangerous to do that.
Is it the same name on the side of those trucks all the time, or is it?
To be honest, I don't know. I, I, I honestly did not notice that. I don't think so. I have not seen a name on the, um, trailer pot, but on the doors, you know, sometimes there's a red cab and sometimes it's a black cab, so I honestly don't know.
I would think.
So they're not their trucks, they're just people delivering stuff to them?
Delivering.
I wonder, I, I know this is not, I don't think this is something we can do, but I wonder if you could go to the board of selectmen and, and try and get, um, a sign put up there that those trucks cannot enter the neighborhood.
I actually called the police one day, and they said they had every right to drive into that neighborhood.
Oh, I know they do currently, but that doesn't mean that can't change, and I think it's the board of selectmen that you would have to go to about that.
That's a good suggestion.
Am I correct about that? Is that board of selectmen? Yes.
Okay. So those, again, NBM, I have no problems with them, they're not the ones making the noises, they do take care of their property. Just the same, it's a twenty, it's a, I asked, um, David, and he said it was approximately twenty feet tall right now. That second story is gonna be another te- uh, ten feet above that, so you're coming down and you're coming in, and there's no way it's gonna be hidden. Right now, that parking on the side or in the back can't be seen. Above and beyond that, I don't know the impact it's gonna have.
So we don't have a profile rendering here? This is all existing?
Can we get a layout of what the building's gonna be for that, currently, and then what that new addition's gonna be for that second story?
A layout, I remember.
Is it existing a one-story or a two-story?
A layout, so.
It's a two-story addition, the first floor would.
So the building now is only one-story?
It's one-story, yes.
And from staff, perhaps we could have an explanation as to, um, what the criteria is that we are supposed to consider when expanding a non-conforming use.
Yeah, the detriment, yeah.
The section six, yes, but also, um, brought it up, um, so they have the existing older building, um, and wanting to add the addition. I didn't realize it was ten feet higher than the existing building. But in the conversations we had, that they, um, were gonna try to have the addition in line with the building, which I, I agree, it would be awkward to have kind of a colonial-looking addition with this building, but, um, we should have a conversation of layering and some of the goals of the town center, and I know we brought up, we talked about trees and other types of vegetation. They, they do keep up their site really well, um, but we usually try to ask questions about kind of diversity and vegetation and some other things to, to really en- enhance the streetscape.
Not only that, where it's within the overlay, you know, and I, I don't know how this is even passed, whether, we never addressed it, unfortunately, with the other ones. But this, I don't know why there's not a sidewalk with the antique lighting and trees along the sidewalk. In other words, this, especially where we're bringing uses in, like an urgent care and reasons for people in these neighborhoods to be walking towards the center of town. You know, we should be looking at granite walkway, granite, uh, curbing with sidewalks and carrying the antique lighting right down Terry Ave. It's all part of the overlay.
Well, there is.
These are the very, these are the least, the least of the things we should be looking at doing here.
There's definitely sidewalk up Terry Ave, past sidewalk and lighting, or at least lighting where the new part of the storage is, and sidewalk goes across the store, I'm not sure where it ends.
Majority of their property is on Long Street.
Yeah.
So that's maybe why the majority, you know, so Terry Ave sort of ends at the circle, and there, you know, at the entrance. And then you take that immediate right, that's Long Street. And you're, and the cars fly down there, and of course, there's a lot of traffic, but there's no sidewalks.
That's what I'm saying, especially people walking their dogs, like they're saying, they walk their dogs down there, but even more so, we're, we're supposed to be promoting foot traffic from these neighborhoods out into the center of town, so, you know, we should be looking at, whether it's part of this, it's not part of this. We should be looking at walkways right down through that northern business property, and then the antique lighting that's been done throughout the whole center of town should be carried right through that hole, right from Long Street all the way up to three A. And, and trees, like we require everywhere else. And I know with the, you know, with the walkways, with the, you know, where the, where the sidewalks were on the crosswalk areas that we require, where the storage is, we required them to do that in brick, so the crosswalks should be in brick. There should be walkways coming up with antique lighting, so these are some of the things I think we need to be looking at, but I think we've, you know, we've kinda hit it on the head a little bit here. I, we almost forgot about the fact that this is part of the overlay, and, you know, the, you know, the chain link fences, the, 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 um.
Bob wire.
The bobbed wire, but the, the trash containers, that, you know, that the dumpsters, all that stuff should be enclosed. I mean, it's, those, those are violations of the downtown.
I really, I think, and a lot of our, my neighbors would agree, we kind of feel like we've been forgotten. You know, everybody's talking about all third Ave and doing up this in the center, and we're right there, guys, and it's, it's, it's a dump.
Right.
And as you mentioned, the dumpsters are out front, the trucks.
I see trash, I see.
They don't care. It's as if there's no neighborhoods, and we're right there. My neighbor's across the street, their backyard literally is the property line for those buildings on that side of the street.
Well, and even the, even the, the walk, even the, the parking lots are all, the, the hot tub is all torn apart, it's not even paved, right? I mean, these are, these are areas that people are traveling through, they're almost throughways to get to other parts, they, I mean, that should be even addressed. I don't, you know, I, I know that's not on the other side of the street from northern business machines, but I think that, you know, it's a good opportunity to discuss this whole downtown.
Area.
It's kind of brought it to light a little bit about how, you know, how, you know, ignored this whole area of town has been. And it's, and it's an entrance, it's a gateway to a residential area, I mean, you know.
It is.
Shouldn't have been industrial to begin with, is my opinion, I, with the overlay, I tried to make that area, Ernie, you were on that, I fought to make that retail. And they said it was a, they said it was tantamount to a taking, and my argument was, no, it really isn't, because retail is a more expensive, you know, use than a, than industrial, you know, than, you know, industrial spaces. So it's the opposite of being a taking, you're actually, you're actually enhancing the value of their properties. So it should've been done back then, unfortunately, it wasn't, and we're gonna deal with this now.
Because it, it made, it made those uses non-conforming, I think that might've been the excuse back then.
Yeah.
Because we had just gone through, had just gone through the CNN thing, and there was a whole bunch of. Right, CNN.
Right. It, it made them non-conforming, but we weren't booting them out. When they chose to change it, it would change to retail, and that's, and now, over time, it would just become an extension of the center of town with a mixed use and.
Yeah, I, I think that definitely is the intention eventually, sure.
But it wasn't rezoned.
But it wasn't rezoned, so it should've been rezoned, it should've been rezoned at the time.
Zoned to residential?
No.
To retail. Part of the, as part of the overlay, it should've been rezoned from industrial.
To BG, maybe.
To retail. That's, that's what should've happened, I mean, it's, I mean, it's, it's just this odd mix of industrial right in the center of our town, it just doesn't belong there.
I, I think if we had that to do all over again, we'd change quite a few things, actually, but.
No, you're right, that's right.
Right now, we've gotta work with.
Sorry.
What we've got and what's in front of us.
Well, again, thank you, I appreciate it. I, I really feel that you're all very thoughtful and considerate about this, so I know you'll, you'll do what's the best, and again, thank you for your time, I'll, I'll be at the next meeting as well.
Thank you, Kathy.
Keep your eye on us, Kathy.
Oh, my God.
Would you folks like to speak on this matter?
Hi, thank you for having us and listening. I'm Linda Answorth, and actually, we are.
Your address?
Uh, Raymond Road. So we're actually eight hundred feet from that area, and then one of the reasons why we came is Kathy pretty much hit everything on the nail, just from the noise, the sound that we get that far away in the middle of the night with alarms and dump trucks and trash pickup. So we just came to see what the plan was.
You were here for the. For the.
Yeah, we don't know, you know, so.
You were here for the generator, you know that I appreciate the fact, even eight hundred feet away, you hear noise bouncing off the building.
We're eight hundred feet from that area, and it's so, oh, Kathy, we met her tonight, I said, she, she must be going crazy living so close to that area. But again, it's not this particular building, so.
Yeah.
So when we hear the generator, we know we lost electricity.
Well, they did anyway.
We can hear it.
Uh, Linda and James Answorth.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks.
I think the name of the company is Iron Mountain, and it's a very highly secured company, that's why they have the bobbed wire, but they do have a fence out there.
Well, Iron Mountain doesn't have the bobbed wire. The bobbed wire is actually on the other side of Terry Ave. On, in a company which I, they claimed that they had the.
I think that's Iron Mountain, where it is.
Iron Mountain definitely has it also, now another company might as well, but Iron Mountain does, I'm sure.
I thought, I thought the other side of Terry had the bobbed wire, and the right-hand side. Okay, okay. Okay.
So they have a, a fence out there, that's a gate that opens up, and when the gate opens up, if they don't close the gate, an alarm goes off. And the alarm just sits there and just alarms constantly for maybe ten, fifteen, twenty minutes. And if you're, you know, and, uh.
Does that happen in the middle of the night, or? Does that alarm happen in the middle of the night or anything like that?
It can, yeah, all the time.
All the time. In the summertime, it's worse, because we get the windows open.
Yeah, we don't have air conditioning.
Well, years ago, there was, uh, a building whose alarm kept going off in the middle of the night, and the police finally gave me the telephone, telephone number of the guy who owns the building, and I called and said, if I'm awake, you're awake. Come down and shut it off, or you're gonna get another call.
He called a few times, so.
I've called them, uh, you know, to be considerate.
How long has that bobbed wire been there? Is that?
Yeah, and how, how, is anybody allowed to put barbed wire up whenever they want?
Ever since, ever since it's been there. I mean, how do you get a permit to put bobbed wire up in a, in a?
Did they, or they?
It's gotta be above a certain height.
Do you need a permit to put up barbed wire? Is, can anybody just do that?
Probably not, to be honest.
I think we should ask the, would it be the building inspector?
Yeah, yeah.
It has to be.
It would definitely not.
Claim with security that they.
Yes.
It has to be of six, sixty, seven inches or something.
Can you ask the building inspector if they've, what the procedure is that someone has to go through to get barbed wire installed? And, and if they followed the correct procedure, and even if they did, what we can do to take that away? It's, I know, nothing to do with.
Yeah, the dumpsters are very loud. Four or five o'clock in the morning, they're out there dumping.
I, I know that from crossroads, and that's illegal, they're not supposed to be doing it that hour, but the people who drive those trucks don't wanna fight traffic, the same traffic you're complaining about at seven and eight, and not only, they either bounce them to do the, the doors, or they bang them on the ground to loosen whatever's in there, and it's very annoying when your windows are open in the summertime. And sometimes it's so loud, you can even hear it in the wintertime.
So we live on seventeen Raymond Road, and mostly I can, we're two houses down from, uh, LA. So we're at the very, very top of the green, at the very water, and that's our property line, so we were more concerned about if they were gonna be doing any building up in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So what you're hearing is the height of the addition is a concern.
And the encroachment into the buffer.
And, you know, we have to make decisions by a supermajority. And, you know, we have to make decisions by a super majority on expansion of a non-conforming use under section six. And so there is some pushback for what you're doing, so talk to your client and you'll prepare them for, you know, what you've heard tonight and the questions we're asking and see if they have a way to make their business addition more appealing.
We, we will do so, yeah, I'm, I'm, again, the last thing we want to do is have something that's, you know, not visually appealing or is going to be obtrusive to the, to the neighborhood. Again, the building is the building, right, from an, just the-
The existing, yeah.
Existing building, you know, we're not looking to change it, I mean, the addition would, you know, mirror the, kind of the architectural design.
But it's going to be taller, so how's it?
Yeah, no, admittedly, it would be, so.
Is it going to have the same inside roof as your proposal?
I believe so, we'll, we'll talk to the architect, but my understanding is that they're going to just try to utilize the same type of exterior materials and-
Well, that exterior there is sort of going up and hiding the roof mechanicals, I presume, because-
Yeah, there might be some behind the parapet type feature there.
But that's, but that existing building is just one story?
It is.
It is.
Yeah. So, you, you've, you've got that hiding stuff and the proposed addition-
Will be taller.
Would be that height.
Plus.
Two, two stories, so it would probably protrude above that roof line.
No, it would be about ten feet higher than what you're, you're seeing right there, but again, it's, just to be clear, I mean, all of this would stay the same. It's basically, you know, right back here where you'd see, you know, kind of a, a two-story element, which is furthest away from, you know, Terriab and Long, so we're talking all the way back here. But I'm, I'm not going to say it still wouldn't be visible, but again, we've tried to tuck it as far back as possible, so.
What's the square footage?
It's eleven.
Fifty-five hundred per floor.
What allows?
Eleven thousand, uh-
Would it fit in the back if you just took that addition and put it-
That's where they're going to wait, that's probably-
Back here.
Well, I, that was what I was asking.
Yeah, no, there's a-
Well, that's closer to the neighbors, too.
There's all sorts of wetland issues, we get wetland streams, just about everything imaginable that, yeah.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Is there a cellar in that building?
I don't believe so.
It's on slab?
No, yeah, I think it's on a slab, yeah.
And you couldn't, and you couldn't dig down because of the water table?
Water table's, yeah, it's fairly high, about five feet down, not, not a lot of room there.
If you had a cellar there, you'd have to have a continuous pump.
Yeah. Yeah, in that area.
I know, I'm, I'm just saying.
Jack, do you want a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to continue these matters to the planning board meeting of February seventh, twenty nineteen.
Second.
No, they're advocating that.
We moved the second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, seven zero zero.
Great, thank you.
So if you've got new information coming, try and get it to staff.
Yeah.
Not the day before of.
Understood, okay, uh, we'll try to work with staff to address some of the comments that have come up, so.
All right.
Thank you.
All righty, back to our discussion items. We did the minutes.
Did we already vote on minutes, or we did?
We did, yeah.
Okay.
That's too bad, because I finally read every G D.
Did you have any, did you have any things to change?
No, I didn't.
Okay, neither did I. Okay.
Gosh, you got my one changed.
Yes, I did, and I made it, yeah.
Discussion, open space recreation plan?
Yeah, I was just going to give a brief, a very brief summary of the meeting, open space and rec plan meeting yesterday with the consultant, members from the conservation department, planning, recreation-
Liz and I were there.
Chairman Kelly. The objective of the meeting was to compile results of the online survey and to incorporate those suggestions into the plan. The draft plan had twelve goals with each corresponding action items. One of the interesting action items was having the town of Burlington explore becoming a tree city. And we know that there are members, you know, the planning board's very interested in making sure commercial property owners maintain specimen trees, so we thought we'd let you, the board, know that that was something that-
And there were a bunch of-
Yeah.
Other-
How many people did this, completed the survey?
Hundred and forty s- There were comments from- Did you see, Chris said a hundred and twenty-seven?
Call was announced.
I was just curious, thank you.
But, but one comment, they had more changes than all the others put together.
It might have been.
So what's the, what's their timeline overall?
Yeah, so they have a, they're, they're getting to the, to the end of finalizing it, for sure.
Yes, it's-
Maybe a couple, a couple more weeks for like final comment.
It's close to being done, that particular consultant they have is very experienced in that type of work.
Oh, good, yeah.
And she's pushing it into shape.
Yeah.
Quite well, and of course, John Keely's there and Mr. Egan, so it's, it's a good committee that's very knowledgeable.
For sure. And I just want to give another, a brief update about another project or program that we're working on. I'm not sure if you guys remember, but it's the municipal vulnerability preparedness program. It's a state program that we're going through to eventually get money for projects that have to do with mitigating climate change as we see an increase in, and, and frequency and intensity of flooding, drought, heat waves and winter storms in town, especially in the future years. Town staff have been getting, meeting together to discuss what are some potential hazards and potential action items that we'd like to do in the future. Some of the action item, just, we're meeting next week for the third time. Some of the action items that we've discussed about potentially implementing are implementing guidelines for drought-tolerant landscaping and site design measures, increasing tree planting within business districts, consider revisions to site design requirements, and also assessing the establishment of cooling centers at schools, the senior center and emergency shelters, so. Eventually, we're, we're also working on, we'll have a big community workshop in March and April with our, like, final recommendations and findings. And eventually, at the end of the spring, we'll have a plan and then we'll be designated by the state as an MVP community. And we will be eligible to get up to like four hundred thousand dollars a year to do, you know, some of the projects that we want to do as a town, so.
So, is there any rush to get it done, or is the state going to run out of money because everyone else is doing it faster, or?
No, no, but I think that the state wants us to complete the plan by the, by like April or May, that's really the only kind of time, no, we're not going to run out of money or anything.
We should be able to complete it by then?
Yes.
We just wanted to highlight kind of the other things we were involved in other than all of the things that we do here and bring in front of you, so.
Thank you.
Do we have to sign for the carve a special permit?
Yes, here, I'll send that around.
Thank you for reminding us.
Since we're all here.
There's no plans to?
Yeah, no, no, we're not.
No plans to sign this evening?
Correspondence, reports from town council, subcommittee reports, we're looking for the sixty-two, sixty-four Cambridge Street was continued tonight. We're looking for next Thursday afternoon for a subcommittee meeting.
Next Thursday at one, I sent out for a subcommittee for Herb Chambers to all of you, hopefully, we can get a bunch of you together to, to talk through it. I know some of you are not able to come, but-
There's a lot of issues that we still need to deal with there, so if you're not able to make it, uh-
So Paul, if you're able to make it-
I was just asking Barbara for a pen, could I, thank you. So it's Thursday?
It's tentatively right now, if everyone can make it, Thursday-
At one.
At one o'clock.
Everyone doesn't have to be there, though.
No, but I want to-
Okay, as many people as you can, okay.
If you can't be there, send your questions or comments in to staff so they can raise them.
Just give me the date, because I always put the date-
Thursday, the twenty fourth.
At seven to today.
At one.
Yes.
Thank you.
So Jack, other subcommittee thing?
At one o'clock.
I went to the first meeting of the Burlington Sculpture Park Committee, which was-
Excellent.
Very interesting, and John, who's heading it up, had invited a representative from the New England Sculpture Association, which, and he was very informative and very helpful and would be working with us moving forward. So we have another meeting set up and what we're probably going to do for, at first, is concentrate on the sculpture pad that's already been built over-
Middle St. Trinity.
Right, near Lifetime Fitness.
Yep.
But we had a, a very dynamic and interesting conversation, I enjoyed it very much. And I will let you know, we're having another meeting in February, I'll let you know the results of that. Like I said, we're going to concentrate on Lifetime Fitness first, but there were a lot of ideas and we were very pleased to find out that the ten thousand dollars that we had asked for from Nordblum, and I don't remember how we came up with that number, to be honest, but according to the gentleman-
They offered and we accepted.
Okay, according to the gentleman from the New England Sculpture Association, we probably can get more than one, possibly as many as three or four sculptures for that price. And so Bob Buckley, who's also on the committee, said that he was going to approach Nordblum to see if they were open to the idea of us spending, not, taking the ten thousand dollars and getting a sculpture in front of Lifetime, but not spending all of the money there and perhaps putting money, some of those monies toward other sculptures that could be placed elsewhere in town. So Bob is, is approaching Nordblum about that, he seemed to think that they would be open to that idea, so it's possible that could give us a jump start.
So the decision was written that that ten thousand was only for the sculpture at last?
No, it, it, it wasn't written that way, it was, I'm not sure how strictly it was written, they, they said they would do a sculpture, they said they would, um, give ten thousand dollars toward that. I don't know how strictly it was worded, but it was sort of implied that this ten thousand dollars would go toward that sculpture, but Attorney Buckley seemed to think that Nordblum would not have a problem with us spending maybe, you know, four or five thousand dollars on a sculpture there and then spending the money elsewhere.
We don't need to approach them, if that's the way it's written, then we can just-
I'm not sure, that's a good question.
Yeah.
Maybe staff can look into that for us.
Yeah, they say, I mean, we had a meeting with Nordblum and Bob and John, maybe two months ago, and Nordblum seemed-
I don't see it as something that we're going to get a fight on it.
They seem pretty open to, they seem pretty open to helping us and kind of amongst anyone.
They've been a good partner, so, you know, we probably can deal with it very amicably, but anyway, it was, it was a, an exciting, interesting meeting and I left feeling like this could be something really good for Burlington, that we may be able to implement more quickly than we thought.
Great.
No, I think it was one of those things where we were saying, you know, the Middle St. Trinity Pike is so barren, really, that you get down there, couldn't we do something? And, and somebody said, how about a sculpture? And it was, you know, we're going through the permitting process and they said, okay, sure. No, really, that, that was kind of happening. And so I don't think they really specified, you know.
Anybody from the, what is it, Burlington Cultural Council, by any chance? Burlington Cultural-
No, I don't think there was.
Yeah, there is a group that exists.
There is, yes.
As a matter of fact, I, I believe that they get-
They do.
They can do it.
They do.
They do, they get the cultural council money, Joe Ankinchel's on that committee, I think.
Oh, I'll have to ask John about that, okay, I don't think there was anyone from there.
And what do they do with their money?
They-
I could be mistaken, because I didn't write everybody's names down.
Challenge, they're trying to bring culture-
I could be mistaken, I did not write down everyone's name, there was one, one woman there who I, I don't know where she was from, so maybe she was from the cultural commission and I, that went past me. So, I'll find out for you, thank you. Okay.
Anything else?
Well, I think it's not specifically to a subcommittee, but be on the lookout, going down Lexington, I, I called George and told him, there's a house being sold down there, it's right near the historical house.
Yes.
A, a couple of houses before that. And they have, they had, it, it's a smaller version, really, of a sale sign, it looks like a sale, but it's, it's not cloth.
You mean a feather sign?
Yeah, it's a feather, it looks like a feather sign, and I said, if the real estate people start doing that, they're going to be on every house and everything else. So take a look at it, what-
It was an open, it's an open house feather sign.
Yeah, is that what that's called?
Who put it up there?
I, I, I saw it, but it's, I work in that industry and it's not mine, and I'm not throwing, I'm not, I'm, I'm not throwing somebody else.
Okay.
Only because-
Yep.
I know who's representing that house, but we're not going to mention it on the TV.
I, I don't care who it is, I think we should just let the real estate people know.
That we don't want those, yeah.
We are not going to allow them.
Yeah.
There's nothing on them. So-
We can't seem to make them go away, maybe we can charge a fee, you know, there's a ten thousand dollar fee to put up a sign.
There's three feather signs in front of Sprint the last time I drove by and this past week on the Middle St. Trinity Pike.
On the, yeah, there's, yeah.
I'd like to find the people who sell those things, because they are super salespeople. And from an illegal signs standpoint, the Princess Jewellers on Cambridge Street, we said no, no illegal signs, so I gave them a couple of weeks after Christmas and they've got that, the sign on the sidewalk, so maybe we can contact them.
Because I went down there, actually.
Today, well, I just drove by there, I don't know.
Looked at that wall and, uh, my-
The sign's right there, right on the sidewalk, so.
A, a sandwich of-
A Tim sign right there, yeah.
Okay, I'll let them know.
And I thought that when the subcommittee met, and I wasn't there, but you, I thought you guys had said that that was going to be an externally lit sign, right, instead of internally lit, whoever's on the subcommittee?
I think when, when, I don't think he's, was planning on doing that immediately, but he, it's-
I was surprised to see the internally lit box princess sign.
So, what-
But that was already, that was already up there.
What did you, what did you guys?
When is he putting it in the sign?
When is he going to put up the other one, so, did you? So when that, when you say it's not immediately, what is the mean?
What is the timeframe on that?
I thought he was going to do something with the roof, wasn't he?
Yeah, the front there, right, yeah, the front, right.
He wasn't gonna, he wasn't gonna build that wall until we looked at, with the materials and then the next thing you know-
The wall's up.
The wall, you know, he told us he used those stones, those stones on the building because they were already cut and it was already done, and I said, okay, well, then it's fine, we need to go, go to the wall, we don't want to see that, we want to see something else. Next thing you know, the wall's up with the-
So can you just check on the externally lit sign for that one, because that's basically, we're going to set that in. Okay, thank you.
One more thing on subcommittees, I did read, I did send out something to, um, Tom Hayes, John, uh, Tom Hayes, Bill and Joe, to try to set up something for sixty-one Center Street, for the front of the site to do a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Did I send it out to everybody or just?
Yeah, I saw it.
I, I think, yeah, I copied you. But I want to try to find a time that works for the two of you, and then once we figure that, I'll send it to everybody else, you guys are-
I wouldn't, I wouldn't limit that sidewalk to the front, by the way. Joe? Joe?
Yeah, just the front.
Center, I wouldn't limit that walk just to the front of, what I'm saying, she wanted a sidewalk in the front where the parking is.
Sixty-one Center.
I wouldn't limit that just to the front of the building, that sidewalk, because there's an oblique in the back of the building, too, I think, I don't know if that's in your brain. What's that?
Breath.
Okay.
I wouldn't go on site to talk through it.
Talking about sixty-one Center Street, the-
Parking, well, sidewalk.
Oh, or-
Parking. The sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
Parking.
Sidewalk for the parking.
Sidewalk, I thought you said sidewalk, okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
So, um, I'll resend, but I just want to try to figure out a time that you guys-
So sidewalk, meaning nothing in the front.
Well, we'll see.
I need to figure out when these guys, if these guys can go.
Yeah, yeah, we'll let the whole, we'll let the whole board know.
Well, just put it on the email, I've started there.
Oh, you read those now?
I do, I do.
What did your grandkids set you up?
You ready, Jack?
We have, so, there's a follow-up old business on that CS Street today, did the, uh, did the historic people get back at all, though?
They haven't gotten back to me, but I, I gave them your contact in, in the email that I sent to contact you, I can resend it, to see if they have some interest.
You know, there's an urgent, it should be urgent, it's an urgency, I think it's not really being taken as an urgency, so.
The Portis Selectmen did discuss it at their Monday meeting, I don't know if you saw it.
They did discuss it Monday, briefly.
They did bring it up.
They didn't take a vote, but they did discuss it.
You've got to get to Chris to push it.
That they agreed to, um-
Explore, yeah.
Explore.
He's put a committee meeting together.
Oh, good.
But they did discuss it on Monday, like, four days ago.
Okay.
Yep. So it's on their radar, too.
I'm not sure they really get it, because I, I heard in the conversation, one of the selectmen said, well, if we bought it, we'd just be taking the building down anyways.
No.
No, 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 that, I, I think, I think that was, that was corrected.
What's that?
That, that concept was corrected.
Okay.
Jack?
That made, that led me to believe that they did, they really didn't get it.
That's all right.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded. Moved in second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying seven zero zero.